So, hi everyone. I'm Catherine Kramer, town planner. And I'll kick off this meeting with a roll call of our commissioners. Barbara Brenneman.
Present.
Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Matt Pogson.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Yeah.
Marcy Schwartz.
Here.
Scott Halstead. Scott, I saw you on, just make sure you're unmuted. Scott, you want to try again?
I'm trying.
Oh, we can hear you now.
All right.
You're good. John Bybert.
I'm here.
And Keith Bybert.
Here.
Oh, Mike Rubulis, I apologize.
I'm here.
Great, thank you. And Marcy.
She called me.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right. Sorry, thank you guys. All right, Barbara.
Thank you. This is Barbara Brenneman speaking. I would like to welcome you and thank you for the roll call. And I would like Inez to do the call to order, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, March 22, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Brianna Hilt application for special permit for proposed clearing and grading within the 75-foot ridgeline protection setback area to construct a new home located at Lot 1D6 Eli Road, also known as H201 Eli Road or AD Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website at HTTPS://www.farmington CT.org/About-US-Calender-Meetings. A copy of this proposal is online at HTTPS://www.farmington CT.org/Government/Town/Plan/Zoning/Commission/Public/Hearing/Documents, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325 dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 5th day of March 2021. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brenneman, Chair.
Thank you, Inez.
You're welcome.
For the sake of those attending the meeting, we will be following an agenda and be voting after each new business that we hear so that we will not have all those folks waiting till the very end, the way we used to do it. So, we'll start new business with the Stanley Whitman House, a sign application at the Farmington Village Green, which is the corner of Farmington Avenue, which is Route 4, and Main Street, which is Route 10. Is the applicant ready?
Can you, can you?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you for having me here tonight. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me here. We have a signed application from the museum that we're presenting. This had previously been approved by the Historic District Commission in 2019. We obviously have had COVID-19 as a little interrupter, and it was brought to my attention that I should bring this before the zoning, town zoning and planning. So, this is the material that I sent in and I'm happy to answer any questions. We're very excited about being able to put a sign up on the green because there's no other signage on the green that identifies what that place is. And to be able to identify that place and associate it with the Farmington Village Green and Library Association helps us to continue on with the legacy that Ms. Porter had started in 1900 when she gave that property to the Farmington Village Green and Library Association to use as a green space for the residents of Farmington. So with that, I'd like to just answer any questions that people will have. This is my first time addressing the Town Planning and Zoning Group and/or for anyone with, associated with the town for that matter. So, please excuse my awkwardness in my address and how, what the protocol is, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We will go forward by asking the commissioners for their opinions on the presentation or questions on the presentation. And we welcome you and thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
We'll start with Patrick.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier. Is the sign illuminated at all?
It is not going to be illuminated. Is that going to be a concern?
No, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what it is and so on and so forth.
So originally, this was going to be part of a longer fence and that the interior was going to be the sign, but due to cost, at this time, we're just going to use this and then we'll probably use plantings on either side of the sign instead of having continuous metal fencing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike? Anything else, Patrick?
Nope, nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
I have no questions, thank you.
Matt?
I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the height of the sign. I see, or not just the sign, but the fence going around here, because I see on a couple of the pages that were given to us that the fence would be six feet high by eight inches wide, eight-inch wide panels for cedar stockade. Now, that says on the, is that the south side? I'm just trying to, this is going to end up encompassing the whole Village Green, is about that my understanding?
It will not. Actually, that's a good question and I'm glad to clear this up for you. So, if you look at the back and the interior part of the drawing here, you can see someone has their cursor on that back wall, that's actually the six-foot-tall privacy cedar fence. And that's what was part of the, when we had this approved by the Historic Commission, District Commission. So, if you go to the front, right on Farmington Avenue, that's going to actually be a two-and-a-half-foot-tall fence setback from the actual wall. That will be the sign and it'll, it'll be low enough so that it doesn't obstruct having people look from their cars into the park, because we want people to look into the park and see all the great plantings and the really greats.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I figured that it was said the south side, so I thought that was the area that had been erected along the property line in the back, but nothing else beyond that front, on that front line is going to be any taller than 18 inches or what's already existing with the stone wall, or, yeah, it's a stone wall.
Right, correct.
Correct, okay. Let me just look back, I'm scrolling through the pages here, I just want to double check. I saw that it said it was going to be sandblasted and painted.
It may be galvanized, too. It's just probably what the sign maker has recommended for more durability, so we're probably going to opt for the galvanization of that so that it really holds up well.
Okay. Does the, so it'll be galvanized, all right. So you're going to galvanize it, but you may just leave it as galvanized, you may not paint it, you're saying?
It, it.
Are you going to galvanize it and then paint it?
Right, right, so that it's a durable.
Okay, okay, good. Is that, this is for the town planner, is this within the center zone, the Farmington Center zone, or is this outside of that?
I don't think the green is in it.
The green is not in that?
I don't think the green is in the center zone.
Okay. I was just wondering if this was.
Lot is zoned B1.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't within the center zone, because otherwise it might be something that supposedly should go in front of the Architecture Review Committee. So, if it was, then it would be something they would probably be taking a look at. But if it's not.
Correct.
It is not, okay. Then, other than that, I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Inez?
No questions, I think it's great. I can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Marcy?
Yeah, I'm with Inez. I'm looking forward to some signage so people know what that piece of property is, so it's great. Thank you.
Scott?
No questions, thank you.
John?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the applicant?
No, I just thank you for your time and I'd also like to invite all of you to come to the museum and visit us there if you haven't been there in a while or at all, and be happy, I'll be happy to meet you all and get to know the, more of the community members, so thank you.
Well, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
At this, I'd like a motion in a second on this application.
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept the application from Stanley Whitman House for a sign at Farmington Village Green, which is on the corner of Farmington Avenue, Route 4, and Main Street, Route 10, as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Number two, Robert Schleckenker Jr., ASLA, accept an application for special permit, medical office use, and site plan approval for property located at 130 Birdseye Road, PR Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 26, 2021. May I have a motion in a second, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept the application from Robert C. Schetzenjer Jr., ASLA, for special permit, medical office use, and site plan approval for property located at 130 Birdseye Road, PR Zone, and schedule public hearing, recommended date of April 26, 2021.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second, please? May I have a second, please?
Oh yeah, Patrick Carrier, I second.
Thank you. There is a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number three, consider the amended intervenor status for application related to 402 Farmington Avenue LLC as submitted on February 12, 2021 by Richard Fishman. Do you have the procedure of this?
So, yes, that's fine. It was part of the agenda review, so commissioners, similar to what we did back on January 25, we have conferred with our town attorney, Mr. Di Crescendo, and he concurs that there's no reason to not grant status for this additional request. So, if we can put forth a motion, as noted in the agenda review, then we'll be able to have this amended intervenor petition for Dr. Fishman.
May I have a motion? May I have a motion in a second?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept the amended intervenor status application related to 402 Farmington Avenue LLC as submitted on February 12, 2021 by Richard Fishman.
May I have a second, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz, and I second.
You got a discussion from the commissioners? Anything?
It's just a formality at this point, right? There'll be additional, okay.
Correct. You're granting Dr. Fishman status on these additional claims that have been made in this petition.
We already accepted, so, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Nope.
No?
No questions.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? That motion carries, thank you. Go on to number four. Consider the request for intervenor status for an application related to the 402 Farmington Avenue LLC as submitted on February 17, 2021 by Douglas and Kimberly Zaitunjin. May I have a motion, please, in a second?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the request for intervenor status related to 402 Farmington Avenue LLC as submitted on February 17, 2021 by Douglas and Kimberly Zaitunjin.
May I have a second, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz, and I second.
There is a motion in a second, any conversation?
So, this is.
All in favor?
Sorry, so this is the second intervenor, right? And we'll be hearing from them today?
Correct, that they're on the agenda today to correct as part of the outline of procedures for this evening. And again, it's a, it's a formality to grant some status, intervenor status, so that they have a status in the proceeding as we move ahead.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, thank you. Move on to the first.
Can I interrupt a moment?
Who's speaking, please?
This is John Bybert.
Okay, John.
It would be.
On my account, all of the permanent members are here, so none of the alternates are voting, is that correct?
I'm sorry, say that again?
As I quickly look through the participants, I believe that all of the permanent members of the zoning board are here, therefore the alternates are not participating in any votes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
We'll move on to a public hearing. Brianna Hilt, application for special permit for proposed clearing and grading within the 75-foot ridgeline protection setback area to construct a new home located at Lot 1D6 Eli Road, also known as H201 Eli Road in an R80 zone. Is the applicant ready?
Brian?
Brian, you're on mute.
Here we go. Yes, we're ready. I'm here tonight with Brianna Hilt, the applicant.
Hello, everybody. We, I just wanted to just introduce ourselves really quickly. Brian's going to do the presentation, but we just wanted to say that we're excited to have bought the land and to preserve the ridgeline. And, you know, we chose to move the house a little, obviously, further away from where it was proposed, I think some 30 years back, because we want to, you know, maintain our privacy and also kind of keep up with the conservation and, you know, preserve the land. So, we appreciate everybody taking the time tonight, and I'm going to let Brian do his presentation because he can articulate much better than we can, so.
We'll see about that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Dennell from Dennell-Lancervan, here tonight to talk about Lot 6 Eli Road. It is part of an approved subdivision from 1991 and 1992. It's a two-and-a-half-acre site on the west side of Eli Road. It's a rear lot. It has access through a common driveway that lots 5, 6, 7, and 8 will use, and the driveway is actually built to our property line and to the utilities are in. The original approval had the house right on the ridgeline, right where the easement is shown on the plan. But since then, since 1992, when the house was placed there on the plan, you've enacted the ridgeline protection of 150 feet and 75 feet on existing lots prior to the regulation being approved. We went out and we located the ridgeline, and the hatched areas on the plan show where the ridgeline meets the criteria of the town, which is 50% for 50 feet. So, we did that, we went out and located it and put it on the plan, and we showed a 75-foot arc that is, shows the regulated area. And we went out and we staked the limit of clear per our plan and met with the town to show them the limit of clear, where the ridgeline actually is on the ground and where the house is. Originally, we had the house turned a little bit counterclockwise to what it is now, but then we went out to the site with Brianna, the client, and we walked the site shorter where things were, showed her where the house next door could go, and she decided to rotate it pretty much parallel to the north property line and move it away from the ridgeline to grant more privacy from any construction on Lot 7. Right now, the house as we show it, the garage side is, I think is one feet, existing grade, and then we have 16 feet of grade change across the house. So, we will require a fill on the south side of the house just to get the basement floor up to grade. We looked at moving the house forward, but we really can't because of the soils test. The soils test show ledge in a lot of the tests, and the better soils are up towards the front of the site. And because the septic system is uphill of the proposed house, I need 50 feet of separation from the house to the septic system instead of the traditional 25 feet if the septic system was downhill of the house. Our limit of clear, we pretty much just have the limit of the grading. And there are, we have pictures that show there's a lot of dead trees, and it's not a very healthy forest at the moment. They do plan on planting a lot more trees after they clear and build a house. And I believe Bruce does have some pictures of the site to show you what the site looks like now. Like, there's the original site plan right there that he just went by, and if you zoom in, you can see the house was right on the edge of the steep bank. We're probably 60 feet in front of that right now. And the health, the health code has changed since then, too. If you look at that plan, it shows a much bigger septic system, but the health code actually has been revised three times since that time period. It actually helped make the system smaller, which is a surprise, because health system usually gets more restrictive, but in this case, it has not. They've come out with better products to make the system smaller and work better, and that's what we're using here, so we can push the house further away from the top of the bank. One thing we do have not shown, but we've talked to the town engineer or Bruce about, is collecting the water off the roof and treating it and slowing it down before it goes down the hill. And that is something, before we get a building permit, that we will meet with Bruce and the town staff to get that approved before it's built. There's the pictures of the woods. You can see there's a lot of downed trees, a lot of mature trees on the ground, and some standing dead trees that may be outside of the limit of clear, maybe three or four of them that we would like to meet with town staff and get permission to, to remove if they present a danger to the new house. I'm not sure if Brianna has anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The only thing I would really add is that, you know, we, we selected this land because of the privacy in the trees, but we actually had to, in our current home, clear a lot of trees after that large storm in July because one nearly, you know, took our roof off. So, it's a little sensitive of a subject to us, just any dead trees that we're concerned about, but that's really, you know, the only thing we would ever ask kind of to, to possibly clear outside of the area that we can clear. If an arborist says that it's, you know, a dead tree or something, a lot of the trees are leaning towards our house. And, you know, just from when we first originally looked at the land in December, throughout multiple snowstorms, you can see a lot, if you scroll through the images, you'll see a lot more dead trees in different areas over time. So, that would just be the only concern we had, but we want to try and keep it as much of a woodsy, private area as we possibly can. So, we've been working with Bruce on that, just to make sure we're staying within, you know, what's right and what's, what is in or what could be a danger and what's not. So, that's the only other thing I wanted to add.
Thank you, Brianna.
You're welcome.
Go to commissioners. Patrick, questions?
Not, not a question, more of a comment. Just by the looks of it, it looks like, yes, the house was brought forward as far as possible, so that's a good thing. And then a lot of the fill, there's a big gully. I am happy to hear the, about the, the treatment of the rainwater. I did notice that where that was exiting the, the house, it looked like it's a pretty steep grade. So, the fact that that was brought up is good. Those are my only comments. No, no questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
No questions, it's time, thank you.
Matt?
The proposed well is in front of the house, it's closest to the ridge, correct?
The proposed well is behind the house, yes.
Okay. So, I've been trying to get myself oriented, because some of these are sideways, and I keep turning myself around, looking at pictures on, I like having plans in front of me, I guess I'm old school like that, but.
Agreed.
This has just been a little bit trickier with the computers these days. No, I've been, I'm very happy that you were able to try to pull the house away from the ridgeline and trying to protect that, and I certainly appreciate it. Is there anything other than the trees, like those pictures you were showing us before, where the trees were, there were a few downed trees and things of that nature? Is there anything that is going to be proposed to be in that general area, or is that just going to be left wooded as it is? I just want to be clear on that.
In regards to closer to the ridgeline, you mean?
That is correct.
Yeah, no, there was, we pointed out a few trees that we showed Bruce, that while our arborist is there, that we want to see if they're, they're dead. They're, they're quite alarming or scary, like, there's a few, like I said, that are actually, there's holes in the bottom of the roots and you can see it leaning. Obviously, we don't want to worry about eating dinner on our back deck and getting hit by a tree, but besides that, like, I would much rather put the money into putting a nicer, healthier tree up there to regain some of the privacy rather than worrying about a couple that are clearly dead. And we fully plan on purchasing close, as close to mature trees as we can, because we love the feeling of almost feeling like you're in a forest, so we don't want to take that away by any means. Yeah, so the only few, there was maybe three or four that looked very scary, questionable outside of the ridgeline, that we have an arborist that's going to come up and kind of mark, then we plan to call back the town staff to see if those ones are okay. That's really the only ones we're interested in, in that area.
We also discussed a fence on the very steep part of the embankment to the northwest, because they are going to have kids and they would prefer that they don't fall down the hill.
Yeah.
We wouldn't cut any trees for that, it would be through the woods, at the top of the bank, on this side of, you know, in the woods, but on the right side of the conservation easement. That conservation easement right back in the woods is the view easement that was approved with the subdivision.
Correct.
And then there's a perfect conservation easement even further west down the bottom of the hill.
That's great to hear. I wish that that happened more often along the ridgeline to have that protection. And it sounds like you're being very thoughtful, so I certainly appreciate that. Other than that, I think it'll be very nice, and I appreciate the time you've put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Inez?
Thank you. I am also happy that you were able to move the house, like the other commissioners mentioned already. This is an approved subdivision already, so, like, I really don't have any concerns. I think that the removal is not excessive, and you're working with town staff, which I think is key, and the replanting that you plan on doing, I think is going to be awesome for the environment and obviously for you. Where is the fill coming from? Just curious.
That's going to have to come from off-site. The material here is very rocky.
Okay.
And we've already discussed with some of the butters, Lot 3, coming across Lot 3 to use as a construction entrance to get into the site, so we don't damage the new driveway that's been put in by the home being constructed on Lot 8.
Okay. And you mentioned a butter, so I'm assuming the proper communication was done?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Marcy?
I have no questions, thank you.
Scott?
No questions, thank you.
John?
No questions.
Thank you. Keith?
No questions, thank you.
I really don't, as chair, I don't have any real questions. It seems like they're within the regulation and they're doing what they're.
It seems like they're within the regulation and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we're headed in the right direction as long as we don't have problems down the road. The applicant, if this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that has clicked in to be part of this Zoom meeting and would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application, you raise your hand on your computer and you'll be recognized to present if you'd like to.
And to be clear, so everyone understands, this is for the application that we just heard about. Any comments or questions regarding the 402 application will take place later this evening.
So Nathan, I see your hand raised. You may unmute yourself now.
Hi, my name's Nathan. I just wanted to say, you know, keeping the trees healthy and alive and that forestation in that neighborhood is what makes it so special. So awesome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is for the Eli Road application. Anyone else to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application?
If you wish to speak, please raise your hand using the function in Zoom.
I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Oh, we have one more. Nancy, you can now unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you, Nancy and Ed C. Rollo? Can you hear us? We're just neighbors, and we're very excited to have new neighbors, and we
They're doing a great job.
We have complete faith that they're going to be taking good care of the property.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
This is your last chance for six Eli Road. Any other public comments?
Okay, before we go back to the commissioners, does the applicant wish to add anything to the presentation?
No, thank you. I appreciate everybody's time. We're excited. So thank you.
Thank you. Hearing nothing, we will close this public hearing. And we'll go to the commissioners for a motion and a second on this application.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to approve the application from Brianna Hilt for special permit for proposed clearing and grading within the 75-foot ridge line protection setback area to construct a new home located at lot 1D6 Eli Road, also known as H201 Eli Road, R80 zone as presented.
There is a motion, and may I have a second, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz, and I second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to 402 Farmington Avenue LLC, application for change of zone from BR and R80 to special innovation zone and site plan approval for multifamily development at lots 40 and 40B1 Farmington Avenue, also known as lot 8231 and lot 9249 Farmington Avenue to the rear of 406 Farmington Avenue. This is a hearing continued from January 25, 2024. Applicant is ready to participate?
I believe we do. Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can. We're going to address one matter.
We want to make, I would just want to make sure you were signed in and listening.
Thank you.
Before this hearing begins, I'd like to make a statement. This is Barbara Brenneman, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Farmington. The commission is in receipt of the February 3, 2021, letter from Attorney Ainsworth regarding certain legal matters pertaining to the application. Specifically, number one, whether standalone residential use on the site located at 402 Farmington Avenue, which is the site, within the special innovation floating zone is permitted in the zone. And second, whether the proposed driveway access to the site is permitted under the regulation. The commission understands that both Attorney Ainsworth and Attorney Hollister shared their positions regarding this inquiry with Town Attorney DiCresenzo. The commission has received guidance from Attorney DiCresenzo regarding these matters, and based on this guidance, this hearing will proceed. Applicant is welcome to proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Attorney Tim Hollister, representing the applicant. The applicant is represented here tonight by Jeff Sager, Kyle Richards, Ben Tripp, and Peter Dunn. Our consulting engineer, who you'll hear from later, is Tom Daley. And then we have several experts who will be testifying, and I will introduce them, or we will introduce them as we go through our geotechnical presentation. I want to take a moment to welcome and thank Ms. Kramer. Nothing like starting a job in the pandemic, but we look forward to meeting you in person at some point. And as always, thank you to Ms. Rutherford and town staff. I will say that this hearing has run very well fairly, with, I think, everybody on all sides of the issues being very well informed. So thank you to the staff for that. Back on January 25, the applicant made its initial presentation. Dr. Fitchman is an intervenor, made his full presentation. There was public comment, commission questions, and then a batch of letters, emails, and comments, many of which involved geotechnical matters, such as the status of the closed landfill, whether there is methane generated by the closed landfill, volatile organic compounds, the geology of the development site and surrounding properties, groundwater, rock removal methods, alternatives, quantity, duration, et cetera, risk assessment from the rock removal, wells, drinking water wells on Pratling Pond Road, a comparison of the present proposal to the year 2000 proposal by the Farmington Avenue Baptist Church, and a history of rock removal and blasting at other development sites in the immediate vicinity. Basically, the applicant has taken the past 45 days or so to address all of these issues. And I believe we'll see we've done so thoroughly and with highly qualified experts. So tonight, we're going to address all of the topics that I just mentioned, and our goal is to put to rest any concern about impacts and risk on the geotechnical front. Commissioners should have received by now the three reports from, one from Fussin O'Neil, one from Haley and Aldrich, and one from Geo Design. You'll see tonight the slides that we've prepared that illustrate the expert reports. And then also, which we'll come back to later on in the presentation, was a guidance document prepared by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in 2019 intended to help commissions like yours assess the environmental impact of blasting and rock removal. I would note that there is, of course, a section of the Farmington zoning regulations, Article 4, Section 27, which has technical specifications for a special permit for rock removal, blasting, intensive construction techniques. The applicant has not applied yet for that yet, not really appropriate until the use is approved. But if we get to that point, if the use is approved, we will, of course, apply for that additional permission. We will comply with all of those standards and criteria. But I just want to stress that, that, the particulars of the rock removal, blasting, earth excavation, that permit is not before you tonight. We're here on the zone change and the site plan approval for the proposed apartment building. So at this point, I want to turn it over to Jeff Sager.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I'm Jeff Sager for the applicant. I live at 15 White Oak Road. We have a lot to say in response to comments that have been submitted, but we've chosen to give priority this evening to a discussion of methane and groundwater. And before I turn it over to our professionals, I offer a few quick points. This is for the benefit of those who may not be familiar with this site and to clear up some misconceptions. First, none of the vehicles accessing or leaving our proposed site will use Pratling Pond Road. None of the people accessing or leaving our proposed site will use Pratling Pond Road. The community we're proposing would have zero interaction with Pratling Pond. So while we are in proximity to three backyards of Pratling Pond, we're not sending, we're not adding, we're not creating any traffic or pedestrian travel in that neighborhood. Second, the building we're proposing will not be visible from Farmington Avenue. You won't be able to see it from Farmington Avenue. 20 of the 25 homes in Pratling Pond will not see this building. And in later discussions, we'll explain in great length what the other five homes will see. Third, the Farmington Plan of Conservation and Development is the guiding document to land planning in town. It's very comprehensive. It takes into consideration many factors when it makes recommendations for future land use. First, let's look at what this site is not. It is not in a core habitat area identified by the Farmington biodiversity study. It is not in the ridge line setback area as defined in the zoning regulations. It does not have prime agricultural soils. It does not have highly erodible soils. Now let's look at what this site is. It's located on an arterial road that has seen massive investment into infrastructure to support development. It's served by a traffic signal. It has access to public water. It has access to public sewer. Fourth, our land has a Farmington Avenue address and is part of the Health Center neighborhood. Its access is to Farmington Avenue, and that has been true since before Farmington Avenue existed, when it was known as Hartford Road. It was the then-owner of this property, James Collins, who granted the state of Connecticut the right-of-way for Farmington Avenue in 1928. And in addition to being identified as a Farmington Avenue property for over 100 years, if you've been left with the impression that our land has been forested for 100 years, our land was in fact actively cleared as pasture land continuously from 1900 to 1990, 90 years. Finally, our land and the quarry were the first commercial and industrial uses on Farmington Avenue. The quarry was blasted and mined from the early 1900s until the 1940s. The Tennessee gas transmission easement on our property was where the trolley ran between Unionville and Hartford from 1894 to 1930. The trolley transported people from Unionville to Hartford and back, as well as sand and stone from the quarry. These sites have a rich history of commercial and industrial use, earlier than any other property on Farmington Avenue. We have three professionals you'll be hearing from tonight to discuss methane and groundwater. Tom Daley is a civil engineer with the engineering firm of SLR, formerly Mylona McBroom. Rob Danielson is a licensed environmental professional with the firm of Fussin O'Neil. Fuss was the engineering firm for the Farmington Avenue Baptist Church application in 2001, and also the engineer for the extensive highway improvements completed in 2003. So they know this site, and they know this neighborhood very well. Deb Monica is a hydrogeologist from the firm of Haley and Aldrich. Ted Rosenving is a geotechnical engineer from the Geo companies. It's a privilege to be working with these extraordinary professionals. I thank you for listening, and I'd like to turn it over to Rob Danielson.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. For the record, my name is Robert Danielson. I am a senior hydrogeologist and vice president at the firm of Fussin O'Neil. Fussin O'Neil is an approximately 100-year-old engineering firm. We provide consulting engineering services to municipalities, state government, industry, development companies, among others. I am a licensed environmental professional in the state of Connecticut. I have more than 30 years of experience investigating sites, investigating groundwater, landfill gases, so forth. I've worked extensively on landfills as well as quarries. So what I'd like to do is start with a brief overview of the area and then talk a little bit about my firm's history with the site and the area. So if you can bring up the first slide, which I believe is RR number one. So just to get oriented a bit, Farmington Avenue runs through the center of the site. The area shown in orange or red is the area of the landfill. This is the Farmington River landfill. The subject property, if you go up the page, is located adjacent. And the proposed development is in the area where you see the blue area. That blue area is actually an area where rock removal is required associated with the development. So as far as the landfill itself, I wanted to take some time and kind of go through the history because we realize it's important. There's been concern, you know, in the past applications, certainly with the Baptist Church, and it's been brought up again specifically in regard to both methane generation as well as groundwater. So the landfill itself was a quarry. It was about nine acres in size, and it was excavated to a depth of about 30 feet through the rock. As mentioned by Jeff, it was excavated, blasted, so forth, to get to an elevation 60 feet below where it is today. And trap rock was mined out of there and used for a number of different uses in the area. So the quarry ended up closing in the 1930s. And then with the large hole that was in the ground, the town of Farmington used that to dispose of waste. That included municipal solid waste. That also included potentially industrial waste. So landfilling occurred in that area for some extended period of time from about the 1930s till 1972, when the landfill was closed. And the closure consisted of bringing in fill to top off the landfill into a mound shape. And then it was capped with clay, which is typical for landfills. They put a low-permeable material over the top of it to prevent rainwater from infiltrating down through the waste. So of note, the landfill has been closed for approximately 50 years. So it's been 50 years since any landfilling has occurred. As Jeff mentioned, Fussin O'Neil has extensive experience working at the site for over 20 years. We did do design work associated with the widening of Farmington Avenue Route 4, which, incidentally, was widened into the edge. which incidentally was widened into the edge of the landfill. And there were extensive studies conducted back in that day, 20 years ago, by HRP associates. We are familiar with all those studies. We also were the engineer that did environmental investigations at 400 Farmington Avenue, which is the white roof building. Our first involvement with the site goes back to the original application by the Farmington Avenue Baptist Church. We did Phase 1, Phase 2 environmental studies on the property in 1998 to investigate environmental conditions, specifically in relationship to the landfill. We also did additional investigations in about 2008 related to blasting that occurred for the entrance road. So if you go to the right of the landfill, the entrance roads, there are two areas of rock that was blasted to conduct the installation of that roadway. So if you move to the next slide, I wanted to call out the differences between the original application and the current application. So the area shown in white here, the rectangular area, was the proposed development plan for the Baptist Church. It was very close to the landfill. And in fact, blasting was proposed within 200, 250 feet of the edge of the landfill. So the town did raise concerns, and at the time, there were some limited studies conducted relative to that application. Now, the current application is in a whole different area. If you go to the right of the rectangle, that's the area we are now talking about, significantly further away from the landhill and uphill from the landfill. So as opposed to being right adjacent to the landfill, the area of rock removal, for instance, is some 800 feet away from the landfill. So we have assembled a project team to investigate impacts from the landfill. I will be speaking to the methane generation and the potential for it to migrate either to homes on Pratling Pond, which is towards the upper portion of this drawing. And then I'll also talk about potential for methane to migrate to the development site. As mentioned by Jeff, Debbie Monica, a senior hydrogeologist with Haley &amp; Aldrich, will then talk about the groundwater flow and the groundwater quality. Ted Von Rosenving will then talk about geotechnical considerations, and that will include methods of potential rock removal. So we're going to take our time with this. We realize it's important. So I want to start again with the methane, since that's the topic that I'll be talking about. So in general, methane and decomposition gases are formed in landfills. When the waste is put into the ground and covered with soil, bacteria break down the waste. And as they break down the waste, they generate carbon dioxide, oxygen, methane, and other compounds that are non-methane hydrocarbons, among others. Methane could be up to 50% of landfill gases. And the reason that is important is because methane is flammable. So if you have a high concentration of methane, it needs to be at least 5%. It is flammable if there's a spark. So we are focusing primarily on methane, but this applies to all of the decomposition gases. Another important consideration relative to methane is that it's lighter than air. So think of helium, a helium balloon. It rises in air. It's the same thing with methane. So methane generated at the landfill wants to rise vertically into the atmosphere. Now what happens is, at landfills, is they're capped often with low-permeable material, and in this case, clay. So the concern is that if there's enough methane building up, it can accumulate under the cap and then migrate in a lateral direction, a horizontal direction, away from the landfill. But soon as it finds a pathway, it wants to rise. It wants to go to the atmosphere. So that's important here. The other important factor, as mentioned before, is this landfill is 50 years old. Landfills typically generate methane and landfill gases for 30 years or so. The highest rate of generation is the first couple of years after the waste is placed. And then each year, it's a decreasing amount of methane. So now we're 50 years later, which is well beyond what EPA generally considers for methane generation, which is 30 years. So let's look at the, in general, what's the actual risk here for methane? And again, you need an accumulation of up to 5% of methane before you have any type of flammability risk. So I want to now move from general discussion to the actual site and methane. So as I mentioned previously, the current development site, particularly the rock removal area, is some 800 feet away from the landfill. And remember, methane is lighter than air, so it wants to rise. It does not want to move horizontally a distance of 800 feet. It really wants to migrate upward and out. What we have at the site is, in order for methane from the landfill to get to the site, and this also applies to the residences upon Pratling Pond, the methane would have to build up below the cap and then migrate downward below the wetlands. Remember, there's wetlands that lie between the white and the red on this drawing. So it has to go down under wetlands. It cannot go through water. So if the fracture in the pores are filled with water, the methane is not going to go in that direction. More likely what will happen is it will find another pathway out. And incidentally, where the Farmington Avenue road widening was conducted, that side of the landfill was cut into. And back 20 years ago, when HRP did their studies, they did find methane on that side of the landfill. They found it in a test boring that was drilled there, and they also found it during the actual construction progress project at concentrations of about 1 to 1.5% max. Remember, to be flammable, it has to be a maximum of 5%. And that area was actually cut into the landfill. The borings were drilled through waste. So that is a kind of a worst-case scenario from 20 years ago, directly adjacent to the landfill. We are now 800 feet away from the landfill, and the residents up on the ridge are even further. So in addition to having to get by the wetlands, the methane would also have to get by a fault. There's a significant fault that runs parallel to that rectangle about between the landfill and the former Baptist Church development site in that general area. And it's a vertical fault, and it separates rock up on the ridge, which is the Talke basalt, from the rock that's at the landfill, which is the Holy Oak Basalt. So the methane would have to go down under the wetland, get by the fault, which is vertical, and remember, the methane wants to rise up. Not only that, it would then have to get past the Tennessee Gas Line, which is also located in that area. And the gas line is backfilled with coarser material, which is typical for gas lines because you don't want to have the gas line compromised. So if it got by the wetlands, if it got by the fault, if it got by the gas line, it still has another 600 feet to go to get to the rock removal area. And all this way, the water table is only 15 feet down. So it can go up 15 feet, or it can go 600 feet laterally, which is not going to happen. So based on the conceptual model, it's my opinion that methane is not an issue at the site. So in order to prove that conceptual model, because the proof is in the pudding, right? We have conducted extensive methane testing over the past 20 years. If you can bring up the next slide. So if you can, yeah, scan down a little bit. So the first methane testing we did was back in 1998, and that was represented by the green dots that are located between the landfill and the former Baptist Church site. Six locations were sampled in the subsurface for methane, and this consisted of driving a probe into the ground and then testing the air that was extracted from the ground with a combustible gas indicator. No methane was detected in any of those locations. 2008, then, we did another investigation related to the driveway. So this was done in support of the blasting that occurred in that area. So the yellow dots and the orange dots, those are additional areas where methane was tested. The yellow dots represent no methane at all. The orange represent where 0.1% methane was detected, which was considered background at the time. Incidentally, subsequent to that, the blasting occurred without incident, no methane issues. In 2020, we then did another methane investigation. The areas in pink, there are 10 locations shown here, between the development site and the landfill. Again, air was extracted from the subsurface, sampled for methane, and no methane, zero. Finally, in 2021, you see the blue dots. These represent either wells or borings that were drilled, the primary purposes of which were really to investigate groundwater and also the geotechnical aspects of the area. But just the same, we monitored the bore holes when the borings or wells were drilled as they drilled down through the till material, which is a layer of material over the rock. And then we also monitored it as they drilled into the rock. Again, no methane. So just to kind of wrap up here, reiterate, all of the methane sampling that has been conducted, we've either detected no methane or traced levels considered to be background. And this totals more than 40 locations, excuse me, that were done over the past 20 years or so. Additionally, if you go to the next drawing, the rock is shallow in the vicinity of the ridge, and it's no surprise that blasting occurs quite regularly. So if you look at the areas in green, those are areas that have already been blasted. So that would include 505 Farmington Avenue, which is about 500 feet away or so, 499 Farmington Avenue, which was extensive blasting. That's about 150 feet from the landfill. And incidentally, that's across the street where the methane was detected during the road widening project. Also, rock was blasted for the entranceway. You can see two areas here. Again, that was conducted without incident. No methane. In addition to that, if you look up near the blue area, when sanitary sewer lines were brought in from below up to some of the houses on Pratling Pond, blasting was also conducted in order to get that sewer line in. Again, no instances of problems associated with the landfill. And then finally, the Farmington Health Department did have records of a request from one of the homeowners on Pratling Pond, I believe it was 42, back in the 1990s, for their well to be sampled because one of their neighbors was blasting for the installation of the foundation. So needless to say, blasting has been conducted extensively in the area, much closer to the landfill, without incident. So in summary, based on the site-specific factors, based on the methane testing, it's my professional opinion that methane is not a risk to either the homes up on the ridge or to the development site. And this is based on extensive testing for methane, as well as understanding the conceptual model for the site. So with that, I'm going to wrap up. And if there are any questions related to methane, I could answer those. I would suggest that if there's any questions related to groundwater quality or groundwater flow, that you would wait for those questions because Debbie will be speaking to that. And if there are any questions specifically related to rock removal, that you wait until after Ted's presentation, which will address that.
Attorney Hollister, you want a break to do questions now, or you want to go through your entire presentation and then come back and have the commission do questions?
I think, why don't we have Ms. Monica go ahead and then break after that, and then we'll come back.
Fair enough. Okay.
Go ahead, Deb.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. For the record, my name is Debbie Monica Downey. I'm a senior technical specialist with Haley &amp; Aldrich. Haley &amp; Aldrich is a national geotechnical engineering and environmental consulting firm that's been in business for 57 years. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in geology with a specialization in hydrogeology. I have 35 years working as a hydrogeologist and environmental consultant. 30 of those years have been with Haley &amp; Aldrich in Connecticut. I have been a Connecticut licensed environmental professional for over 20 years. In addition to my work with Haley &amp; Aldrich, I have been active as a volunteer and elected official in Stonington, Connecticut. I am currently a member of the Stonington Board of Selectmen. I served on the Stonington Inland Wetlands Commission for 14 years, including serving as chairman and vice chairman of that commission. I also served for many years as community co-chair of the Restoration Advisory Board for the Submarine Superfund Site in Broughton, Connecticut. Our role in the project was to evaluate whether the proposed construction activity on the subject site would impact the groundwater quality or groundwater flow in the proximity of the site, particularly considering the private residential wells that exist on Pratling Pond Road and the existence of the closed Farmington landfill. As part of the investigation, I reviewed numerous previous environmental reports and published geologic reports, information on file at the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Connecticut Department of Health, the Farmington Valley Health District, and that information included well-drilling permits and well logs and results of previous chemical test data from water supply and monitoring wells. Based on the investigation, it's my professional opinion that the proposed construction activities will not significantly impact groundwater flow or quality. There are really four critical pieces of information that support this conclusion and which I would like to explain further. First, and actually, I guess if you go on to the next slide, it's kind of my cover slide. First, yeah, is the general direction of existing groundwater flow in this area. It's from west to east, or from the residential properties on Pratling Pond towards Farmington Avenue. Talk about this slide. So gravity is a primary driver of groundwater flow. These diagrams you're looking at depict how natural groundwater flow is from areas of high hydraulic head or high elevation to areas of low hydraulic head or lower elevations, generally following topography. By measuring depth of groundwater in wells, we can map the elevation of groundwater and infer a flow direction. we can map the elevation of groundwater and infer a flow direction. Can you forward to the next slide, please? As shown on this topographic map, the land slopes from the west, from Praddling Pond on the left, to the east, to Farmington Avenue on the right. During this investigation, we collected groundwater elevation data from eight locations on the subject property to produce the elevation flow map that you see here. The locations sampled included monitoring wells, which are shown as blue dots in the center, and two former industrial supply wells associated with 400 Farmington Avenue, located on the subject site, which are shown as green dots on the plan. This map shows how our measured elevations of the water table range from approximately 390 feet in the west, near Praddling Pond Road, down to 360 feet in the east, near Farmington Avenue. The significance of this information is that groundwater flows downhill and does not naturally flow uphill from the landfill towards the direction of the homes on Praddling Pond Road. The second finding that I want to discuss is the presence of the fault zone, which Rob mentioned, between the site and the former landfill. If you could move to the next slide, please. Based on evidence from well logs, which described the layers of subsurface rock encountered by a well driller, we were able to identify this inactive fault zone that runs along the eastern side of the site. The faults described in published geologic reports and also was identified in previous geophysical studies of the 400 Farmington Avenue property. The slide you're looking at is from a published map of local bedrock geology from the United States Geological Survey. The arrow on the left points to the approximate area of the proposed construction. The arrow on the right points to the approximate location of the former landfill. The fault zone is that solid black line that trends to the northeast between the two arrows. And results from our review of well logs further confirm the location of this fault. If you could forward to the next slide, please. Kind of go out a little, yeah. This plan shows the location of two geologic cross-sections that we created based on information from the well logs from residential, industrial, and monitoring wells. The cross-section locations are shown as those solid black lines. The first one, number one, runs from west to east, from Praddling Pond to Farmington Avenue. The second runs from the northwest to the southeast, from the location of the site to the former landfill. The fault is shown as a black dotted line, and the yellow line is the gas easement. You could forward to the next slide, please. This figure depicts the cross-section that goes from west, near Praddling Pond on the left, to the east, near Farmington Avenue on the right. The cross-section is similar to what you'd see if you looked at the slice of a layer cake, the inside of a layer cake. And this view is looking north. It shows the rock layers below the site and the surrounding area. The vertical lines represent the wells and the well logs that we used to construct the section. And they include residential well logs on the left side of the plan and the former industrial supply wells on the right side of the plan. The cross-section shows the varying layers or strata of the rock as you progress deeper into the ground. As you can see, there are different rock types. It's slope to the east. And the different colors represent the different rock types. The green and the blue layers are basalt, which is commonly called trap rock and was deposited by ancient lava flows. The red and the yellow layers are sedimentary rocks, arcos or sandstone, that were deposited in the valley between lava flows. The fault, an inactive 20 million, 200 million-year-old steeply dipping fracture trends northeasterly in that area between the landfill and the site. When the fault was active, the rocks on the east side, the Farmington Avenue side, moved downward relative to those on the western side, the site. And you can see this if you look at that green basalt unit. The basalt that underlies the proposed construction site, which is kind of, you see those clustered black upside-down triangles, is talcup basalt. And it is not the same lava flow as the younger polio basalt that was quarried at the location of the landfill. You can see that split between the two. Besides separating the rock units between the site and the landfill, the significance of the fault zone is that it acts as a preferential flow path for liquids and gases as they move through the bedrock. In bedrock, groundwater flows, again, from areas of higher to lower elevation, primarily along cracks, joints, or planes in the rocks. The fault is a preferential flow path, kind of a highway compared to the less extensive other cracks, which are more like side streets. And so even though we've established that the groundwater is moving to the east, in the event that any pollutants were moving off the landfill in bedrock to the west, the fault would serve as a preferential conduit to the northeast. Our third finding is relative to the location of the nearby wells, both in terms of lateral distance from the construction activities and in terms of depth. If you could move to the next slide, thank you. This plan that you saw previously shows the area of the proposed rock removal, those hatched lines, and the location of the nearby water supply wells on Praddling Pond Road. The closest well to the site is at 52 Praddling Pond to the north and is 154 feet from the limit of proposed rock removal. The next closest wells are on the west on Praddling Pond, and they range from 533 to 853 feet from the limit of the proposed rock removal. You can move to the next slide. This is that same cross-section that you previously saw. And I want to highlight the location of the proposed construction again, those clustered upside-down triangles in the center. This construction is proposed to occur within the glacial till, that brown layer up on top, in the upper portion of the basalt, that green. The nearby wells on Praddling Pond Road, which are shown by those vertical lines on the left side of the plan, are completed to depth of 125 to 350 feet in the sandstone in the arcos. If you could move to the next slide, please. This second cross-section trends southeasterly from near the area of proposed construction to the former landfill, about 700 or 800 feet to the southeast. The well on the left-hand side, the far-left-hand side of the plan, is 52 Praddling Pond Road, 250 feet deep and completed in the sandstone. As you can see from this section and the previous section, the depth of that proposed earthwork is limited to, at most, the top 15 feet of soil, the till, the glacial till, and basalt rock. The significance of this is that the residential wells are located from over 150 to 850 feet away from the area of proposed rock removal. And these wells are completed to depths of 125 to 350 feet deep and tap that deeper layer of sedimentary rock which sits below the basalt rock. Proposed construction activities will not include disturbance or pumping of that sedimentary bedrock aquifer. It's my professional opinion that disturbance of this shallow localized area of basalt, whether it be through mechanical rock removal or controlled blasting, will not adversely impact the deeper sedimentary aquifer from which the upgradient residential wells are drawing water. Could you forward to the next slide, please? Finally, I want to comment on the results of water quality sampling at the site. In 2017, HRP associates sampled water from three wells, which are the blue dots in the central part, kind of between the current site and the landfill. They sampled water for analysis for landfill leachate indicator chemicals and for industrial chemicals, including volatile organic compounds, petroleum, PCBs, and metals. No evidence of landfill leachate or industrial chemicals was detected in that sampling. In February 2021, Fust O'Neill re-sampled groundwater from those same three wells and from a newly installed monitoring well located up in the area of proposed construction within that yellow square, kind of the central well up there. Groundwater samples were again tested for similar parameters to 2017 testing, including chemicals associated with landfill leachate, heavy metals, and again, industrial chemicals and petroleum, which were reportedly disposed at the landfill. Like the 2017 data, the results did not detect evidence of landfill leachate or industrial chemicals or other compounds that are not naturally occurring in groundwater from bedrock wells in Connecticut. The results of these samples support my professional opinion that there has been no adverse impact groundwater on the subject site caused by the landfill. And this is what we would expect, given that the groundwater flows from west to east as previously described and not upgradient towards the subject site in residential homes on Praddling Pond. At this point, I'll pause and see if you have any questions on this topic.
Yes, thank you, Deborah. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Al, I think we've given you a lot of technical information. So I would invite questions to Mr. Danielson and Ms. Monica at this point, if you'd like.
I'd like to take a break here and let the commissioners ask questions. At this point, since the presentation is currently fresh in their mind, a lot of information has been presented. So I'm going to go to the commissioners and I'll ask you like I normally do in the same order. Patrick, do you have any questions about what you've heard?
No, I do not very thorough, very clear. I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I have no questions. Just thank you for the explanations and technical information.
Matt?
I was hoping, first of all, the methane one, I don't have any questions about the groundwater one. I'd just like to go back to the picture that showed the fault line with the different, yep. There's a different picture than that one.
That one?
Yep. So currently, the fault line falls along the line of the pipeline, correct?
Near the pipeline, yes, yes.
And the pipeline would be to the, as we're looking at this picture, to the right? Or is it to the left of that fault line?
It's to the left.
To the left, okay. And the proposed development is where the arrows are, that is correct?
Yes.
Okay. And everything that, all of the homes and everything that we're talking about are further to the left, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So any of the water that might be coming from this site is going to hit that fault line, follow that fault line as it flows down. Basically, as you said, from gravity in general. But you did refer to there being an aquifer under there. Now, where in this diagram would you say that aquifer is inside that rock?
An aquifer is a place in the rock that it contains groundwater. So the aquifer that the homes are pulling from is that kind of reddish-pinkish red color, the sedimentary rock. You know, there could be some in the area pulling from the basalt, but it is not as good of an aquifer. So wells, and I looked at other wells in the area, they're all down deeper into that sedimentary rock. So that would be the more aquifer that's being used in this area, if that makes sense.
It does. Now, as blasting may occur, and that will occur again where those black arrows are pointing down, that blasting is going to be on top of, which type of rock did you label as the green?
That's basalt.
Okay. And structurally, how would you evaluate basalt if you were to say you're going to be blasting an area of basalt? Is that going to come apart easily? Or is that going to be something that breaks apart and fractures in large chunks? Or is it going to, tell me how that would come apart if you had to do blasting?
So if you don't mind, I would defer that to Ted Von Rosenthing, who is going to, is a geotechnical engineer and is going to talk more about that.
Okay. We can do that. That might be best if that's fine with everybody else, for him to answer that question.
Yeah, that's not something that I evaluated in this.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to refer to him, but we're going to wait until that time when they discuss it.
The presentation hasn't been made yet.
Very good. Okay, then I'll just continue with what, my point here, I guess. My concern here is that I'm curious to hear how that will affect that type of rock and therefore, if it'll change or create fissures of any sort that could possibly potentially lead down to the area where the aquifer would be. Now, that aquifer, obviously, again, you'd think that it's flowing from a higher elevation down to the lower elevation. But water, as we know, when it sits, it is level across, basically, as it sits in the ground. It's not going to be sitting there on a plane. It's going to be on a flat plain. So if that's something that is going to be disturbed, opening it up and possibly changing, changing basically what's going to be accessing that area and that aquifer, I have concerns about that. It is good to see and good to know that the, this natural division between the landfill and this area should protect any groundwater from what's in the landfill. However, I am curious to see how, again, how blasting would affect these types of rock and possibly the aquifer that is feeding these homes. So I will wait until I hear that part of the presentation. I want to just say I really appreciate the fact that this has been brought to us. I expected that we would see this the last time when we were being presented this information. And it's good to see that it's been brought to us at this time. So thank you very much. And I will hold off on any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Hi, Nev?
I have no questions. I also wanted to thank the presenters. I had no idea this type of testing has been ongoing for all these years. It definitely makes me, as a resident, happy. I don't live in this neighborhood, but that's definitely reassuring with all this stuff happening here between the landfill and the gas pipeline. So thank you.
Thank you. Marcy?
I have no questions at this time, Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself again from discussion on this application.
Okay. John, do you have any questions?
Just so I'm clear, from all this technical information, I'm gathering that what the message is is that the blasting should not be impacting detrimentally the methane, and it should not be hurting the groundwater either. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Keith, do you have any questions?
I have no questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Barbara Brenneman. I may have misheard a statement about the methane gas, and I'd like to go back to that, please. When you talked about the testing that was done for the creation of the road for this project, there was one point of methane gas on that roadbed? Is that correct? It was, I think you said an orange dot?
Rob Danielson, can you?
Yeah, if you can go to the drawing that shows the different colored dots. It's after this, I believe. If you can zoom in to the yellow and the orange.
It was up by the white building, I thought. Yeah, there.
So back in 2008, methane sampling was conducted along that road. And that's what those yellow dots and the orange dots represent.
Okay.
The yellow dots, no methane at all was detected. In the red dots, there was a very low trace level, which was considered background at the time, of 0.1%. And again, after that, the blasting was conducted in that area, and there was no methane detected associated with that whole project.
Well, I was here on the commission at that time, and I remember that the methane was found. But my question is, you've made a pretty adamant statement that methane rises, it doesn't roam, it rises. How did the methane get from the landfill to that location if it doesn't run with the land at times? the landfill to that location if it doesn't run with the land at times?
So I don't believe that that methane was from the landfill. It was trace levels which can be associated with naturally decaying organic materials. You do have a big wetland complex near there. The levels were such at low level that they were consistent with what you might find in a background condition.
Yeah. Rob, this is Tim Hollister. I was just going to suggest that you clarify what the term "background" means.
So when you do testing with an instrument, it can only register so low, below which the results become somewhat unreliable at the very, very trace levels. So there can be naturally occurring background. There can be natural fluctuation with the instrument at these very low levels. So what was detected was, again, very low, 0.1%. Methane being an issue up at 5%.
Then I want to further that question. Because Farmington, in its early years, was just that, it was a farming town. And this area was a farming area at one time. So my question is, would the intense burial of animal fecal matter create methane?
Well, yes, methane can be resulting from animal waste as well. So you can get background levels from animal waste. Again, with time passing and the bacteria working on the organic material, it tends to decrease in generation over time, just like the landfill would. So that as time goes by, it generates less methane, and the same thing would be true to any kind of animal waste.
Okay.
Barbara, this is Keith. Can I ask a follow-up question on your question?
Sure.
So that very small 0.1% background level of methane, is that common in other areas as you guys go around and take these kinds of samples? Or is it more common near old dumps like this? Is there any reason to think that it would be unusual?
No, it's not unusual to get those kind of low, very low hits, which is basically pressing the technology and the instrument to measure something so low. So at that very low level, you can get hits. And this could be anywhere. It doesn't necessarily have to be near a landfill.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to feel secure that there was no indication that the landfill methane traveled to that site. It's a completely different methane basis. It doesn't come from the landfill. Am I correct?
Yes, when we did that work in 2008, it was determined at the time that it was a background condition and not believed to be from the landfill.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from any other Commissioners before we move on to the next presentation? All right, let's move on to the next presentation, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Tim Hollister, at this point, I'd like to introduce Tom Daley from Milonin McBroom and SLR Consulting. And we'll pick off a three-part presentation focusing directly on rock removal and blasting alternatives. So it'll be Tom Daley, Ted Von Rosenthing, and Jeremy Karen.
Thank you, Tim. As Tim indicated, Tom Daley with SLR Consulting, formerly Milonin McBroom. What I'd like to do is just kind of set the table for Ted, who's going to get into the very technical part of the geotechnical part of it. But I'd like to give the Commission a context of the amount of earthwork that we're talking on this project. Throughout the years, there's been a large amount of test pits done on the site for multiple users. But it's kind of in this area on the site that we're looking to propose the project. Just to give you a context to the Commission, you're looking at about an average depth of 10 inches of topsoil, 40 inches of subsoil, and at that point, you hit the bedrock layer. The 1999 test pits indicated that primarily across the site, about the first two feet of rock is ripable. So it's a softer, more fractured top layer. So you're looking at about anywhere from, you know, four and a half to six and a half feet of rock over the top of the hard rock. We have worked very closely with the applicant and actually have made adjustments during early planning to make our best effort to balance the site and really have a cut to fill. So just to give you a context is we're estimating that there's approximately 40,500 cubic yards of cut on-site, but 85% of that will be used on-site. So 85% of that volume will be simply just brought to the other side of the site to raise up the site to be, to be flat. So in the context of a project, that's pretty close to a balance. Anytime you can take 85% of your cut material and reuse it on-site. Some of that material is going to have to be exported just because there's an abundance of topsoil, which is 10 inches thick. As we look deeper, as we take a little bit of a deeper dive into that overall volume, we are estimating based upon all the information that's been provided in the boreings and the test pits that we have approximately 22,000 cubic yards of rock to remove. Of that 22,000, about 7,000 cubic yards is just shallow rock. So it's zero to five feet deep of a cut, potentially well-suited for some more mechanical or ripping means. Some of that is also in the detention basins that ultimately would not make sense to do any type of mass rock removal. So as we focus on the really, the largest portion of rock removal is we're talking about 15,000 square, sorry, 15,000 cubic yards of deep rock removal. And then overall context of this project, it's a smaller, it's less than 50% portion of that. To give you some context, the blasting for the office building at 599 was also about 15,000 cubic yards for that. And then there was an additional anywhere from about 12,000 to 15,000 cubic yards of rock that were just recently removed from the old commuter lot that I'm sure this Commission saw happen over the last few years. So just to give, kind of set the table for you in terms of context of how much rock we are proposing to remove on this site. And I think that will give you better eyes as to, and a better understanding as Ted goes through his presentation. With that, I'd like to transfer and pivot over to Ted Von Rosenthing to get into the more details of the geotechnical study that he performed. Thank you.
Hey, Shannon, I think, this is Kyle Richards. I think that Ted may be on the other side, not a panelist, but a attendee.
He called in as an attendee. All right, let's see if I can find him.
Thank you for finding me and doing your best to pronounce my name. My name's Ted Von Rosenthing. I am a geotechnical engineer. I have been practiced, I've been working for a geotechnical firm since the mid-'70s. I was a co-op student at Northeastern. And started, I've been working in Connecticut since 1985. Started geo design in 1995, so this is 26 years in business. As far as my other credentials, I'm a registered professional engineer in Connecticut, 13 other states. I got my bachelor's degree at Northeastern Civil Engineering, my master's at MIT Civil Engineering, where for those of you that don't know what a geotechnical engineer, what makes them different than a civil engineer, it's a specialty. We were trained in soil mechanics, rock mechanics, underground construction, engineering, geology, groundwater flow. It's a specialty. So we, some projects you may be familiar with that I've worked on. I'm the engineer of record for the foundations of the Q Bridge, City Place Two, both founded on a rock. My firm has also worked over at the Ambulatory Care Center. We worked on that design-build project. And I did work on the planning of the I-84 interchange that I don't think they've built. So have Farmington experience. Some sensitive projects I've worked on that involve rock removal would include, oh, I would add that I appreciate what you do because I'm chairman of Town of Western Conservation Commission. So I'm usually knowing what you're doing in some capacity, so I recognize that. Projects in sensitive areas that I'd just like to highlight quickly. We did all the consulting for the contractor on the 34th Street Station across from the Javits Center, which involved 100-foot-deep cut, removal of 20 feet of soil and then 180 feet of rock. Certainly a sensitive area. The first project I blasted, I was involved with, we blasted right next to our nursing home back in the '80s in Beverly, Mass., was, we're within five feet of an operating nursing home. The, more recently, we are the Metro North's system-wide consultant for all their rock slopes, which involves assessing what remediation and removal of rock needs to be done along all of their lines except for Point Jervis. The, we're not doing the Metro North line here in New Haven line, but we're doing the others. So another recent project, I've got two more, behind a, we did a 40, 50-foot-high rock slope directly behind an operating hotel and restaurant to expand their parking area in Danbury, Connecticut, with a manufacturing building sitting right on top of the slope. And finally, and this is very fresh, last week I wrote a specification for blasting next to footings that are holding up an I-95 bridge in Westport, Connecticut. And it's also near, you know, within less than 200 feet of some residential and other commercial buildings. So why was I brought onto this project? I guess it may be self-evident. But was to evaluate the subsurface conditions, both as a geotechnical engineers for the foundation design and earthwork and that type of thing, but also to make a determination of the safety of the rock removal as required under the proposed development and address your concerns. We were out in the site in early February. We spent a week of doing rock boreings and coring and for that purpose of designing the foundations and providing contractor information. And we've also, we're very familiar with the geology in the areas, and there were no surprises out there. We hit basalt, and the basalt is something that, as Tom was talking about, tends to be a little looser, more jointed up at the top, and increases in its massiveness with depth. And actually, its permeability decreases with depth, too. So getting back to what Debbie was saying, that's one reason they don't have aquifers in that. Blasting is routinely performed successfully for construction projects in much more sensitive settings, in the subject site. The, so what's used is controlled blasting, which is something to make sure that the concerns are addressed and it's done safely. So each plan is designed specifically with the environment in mind. It's, what's unique about blasting is it's adjustable. You can design it and tailor it, and it's scalable. So the, every project is unique, but this is not an uncommon blasting situation or a rock removal situation. So we work closely with Main Drilling and Blasting, who is the very experienced blasting contractor that they've already retained, which is unusual. Usually you don't retain a blasting contractor until you get into, you know, construction, closer to construction. I've worked with them for many years and very capable, and we'll work closely with them for them to follow our specification for rock removal. And we tip our hat, I tip my hat to the town of Farmington. You've got most, one of the most restrictive, and that's not a criticism. You've actually got regulations on blasting, and you've set a limit, which is lower than the state limit, and many towns do not have any such regulation. So bottom line is, we're going to design a program that meets or exceeds your regulations in terms of vibration, public notification, decibels, which is sound, which is air pressure, and meet your comprehensive regulation. If you pull up the slide which shows distances, I'd like to just reference that for a moment. And what, this slide could be a little larger, I guess, so you can all see it. I'm certainly having trouble. What I'll note is this slide has got the crosshatched areas showing where the rock's going to be removed. It's got arrows showing distances to wells and to residences, and I think the gas line's in there, but the gas line is, I think, about 170 feet away. What will control the blasting, and Jeremy, who follows Main Drilling and Blasting after me, would agree with us, what controls are the closest features? So what you, you design your plan for those features. For example, the house that's 154 feet away to the north, that one, that's the closest facility, and the gas line, which is at long line, it's about 170 feet away. That will, if you design for that, you can, don't worry about the rest, let's put it that way. So that is, you know, the landfill's over 800 feet away. So taking into consideration these site-specific features, I have no doubt the blasting can be performed at this site. It will meet or exceed, adhere, whatever you want to, word you like to use, the Town of Farmington regulations. In the most extreme case, we usually describe the fracturing beyond the, you know, as it relates to the diameter of the holes. It's 15, 20 feet. But in general, I would say it's more like five, closer to five feet, maybe up to 12 feet. So it's a very local effect you get to fracture the rock because you just want to fracture the rock enough so you can dig it up. So therefore, my professional opinion, based on my lengthy experience, the rock removal at this site can be conducted safely by both mechanical means and to the extent necessary blasting, by implementing a controlled blasting plan, which is the standard these days anyway. It will not adversely affect residential structures, the gas line, wells, or the landfill. Now, that concludes my presentation. I don't know if you want to take questions now, Attorney Hollister, or if you'd like me to roll in to introduce.
Why don't we move to Jeremy, and then we'll take questions after Jeremy?
Okay. I'd like to introduce Jeremy Carone, who is the manager of Main Drilling and Blasting. And he will tell you about the nuts and bolts of blasting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
My name's Jeremy Karen. I'm a division manager for Main Drilling and Blasting. My purpose tonight is to give a high-level description of the blasting process if the developer elects to use controlled blasting to remove the rock on this project. I'll start with myself. Again, my name is Jeremy Karen. I'm a division manager. I've been in the industry for 23 years. All those years are with Main Drilling and Blasting. Started as a laborer and was a drill operator, worked into a blasting capacity, and then into a superintendent role in a and then into a superintendent role and a manager. And I'll give you a little history about Maine Drilling and Blasting. Maine Drilling and Blasting was started in nineteen sixty-six by a father and four sons at a kitchen table in Gardner, Maine. And over the last fifty-five years, we've grown to be one of the largest drilling and blasting companies in the Northeast. We're currently conducting drilling and blasting operations as far south as Tennessee and all the East Coast, right to the Canadian border. We successfully complete thousands of detonations per year, literally thousands of blasts per year as a company. We're operating, you know, between ninety and a hundred drill rigs right now with about four hundred to four hundred and fifty employees. And we were the, we was, we were the blasting company in two thousand and eight that did the blasting on this project for the road improvements and utility relocations. Just to kind of give everybody like a high level view of the blasting process, I'll, I'll walk through that, what, from beginning to end. You know, the first thing that any blasting contractor has to do is secure a blasting permit. The town of Farmington has a very specific, as Ted mentioned, a very specific process for permitting in, in regards to pre-blast surveys and, and well monitoring or well testing. So the permit process will, will be done in accordance to Farmington's code. There will be a dig safe pool that will identify all utilities that are in the immediate area. And pre-blast surveys will be offered to all property owners within four hundred and seventy-five feet of the blast area. And those pre-blast surveys will include a, a well test, which will get a baseline water sample of the existing well water. And just for everybody's information, a pre-blast survey, it takes about an hour for a residential home. It would be an employee of Maine Drilling and Blasting with the permission of the homeowner or the property owner that would come in and, and video the existing conditions of, of the home or, or the business that's within the, within the pre-blast radius. And kind of introduce ourselves and, and, and give everybody a point of contact if they have questions or concerns with the blasting. We, we want any of the surrounding abutters to be able to reach out directly to us to, with any concerns. After the pre-blast surveys are completed and, and the permits are in place, we'll actually mobilize a crew to the site. And the very first thing that our crews do is start what we call a job hazard analysis. Everything that we do operationally is based on safety from the second we get out of the truck to when we get home. And, and the job hazard analysis is the first step in that process. This is a document that will identify any and all hazards for, for ourselves, for other construction workers or for the general public in and around the area. And as we identify those areas, we will list the mitigating factors that we will use to make sure that those hazards are in control. The next document that they're going to prepare is a site security plan. We're going to have a written document that would involve anybody in our site security for, for a blasting evolution, where people will need to be for muster points, where sentries will be to make sure that nobody wanders into the blast area, how those sentries will communicate and, and what everybody's role and responsibility is. And everybody has to buy into this document and sign off that they've read it and they understand what they do during, during the course of a blast. And then every day our, our foreman will start with a pre-task analysis. So we identify the specific goals for that day. We, we identify which employees are responsible for which processes throughout the day. And it kind of kicks the crew off in the morning with, with a safety talk or a toolbox talk, if you will, is, is a term that we use in some other projects. After, after we assess the safety and we document all of our policies and procedures and what we're going to do to make sure that everybody stays on the, on the site, we're going to identify an area for a test blast. A test blast is going to be a, a small blast with a minimal number of holes. We typically try to start at the furthest point from any sensitive structures. And, and what we're going to gain from this blast is, is a ground constant, constant, so that we understand how this geology transmits vibration. We're going to also understand how does this rock react to the explosives we're using and the blast design that we're using. How does it fragment? How active is it? And after we, after we do that first test blast, every blast after that, we dial, we dial in what we're doing to our design and through the products that we're using, through the hole sizes that we drill and through the initiation systems that we use to detonate the blast. And typically by the third or fourth blast, we will understand exactly what we're producing for ground vibration. And I'll get to that in a second and what does ground vibration mean to the abutters? You know, a typical day on, on a blasting site would normally be about two blasts a day. Normally there'd be a blast in the morning and a blast in the afternoon. And, you know, people want, that have never experienced blasting, they, they, they kind of, it creates a lot of apprehension, they want to know what it's like. And I guess the best way for me to describe what a blast would be like to a homeowner or, or somebody in a building is similar to a clap of thunder. The blast itself is, is over in less than a second. Typically it's a half a second of duration. It's not uncommon for something to rattle on the desk or, or for a window to vibrate. Ground vibration travels much further through, through the earth than, than anything else that's produced by the blasting and human beings are very sensitive to it. So we will notice that there is blasting in the area. One of the, one of the things that we like to do is for the people that are surrounding the blast sites, we do like to offer to put them on a, on a call list. And what we do as a company is we set up, it's a robo-call from our, from our office, but it'll notify everybody in the surrounding area of a project of an upcoming blast. And knowing, knowing that there's a blast coming, being able to communicate with the blasting contractor, having a point that if you have any concerns as a homeowner or a property owner that you can reach out to, we try to keep those lines of communication as open as possible. We, we try to take all the apprehension out of the blasting. And what we typically find, after about the first week of blasting on a project, it becomes boring for most of the people that are, are in, in proximity that they can either feel, feel it or see it. And a lot of times people even ask to stop being bothered with the call list because they don't want to be bothered. That, that's a, that's a typical, typical evolution of blasting in a day or on a project. I do want to talk a little bit more specifically about the protection of structures. You know, there's two components in blasting that are typically associated with damage. One is what's called a fly rock or debris. And that would mean that a blast was initiated and the blasting contractor had something leave their blast site, either a rock or, or some overburden material that could potentially strike something or cause damage or physical harm to something. And as a blasting contractor, you know, we have to use good blast design. We have to, we have to make sure that we're using good loading techniques, but we're also going to use blasting mats. And every blast in, in this, on this project would be a hundred percent matted. Our blasting mats are rubber tires that have been woven together. They're twelve feet wide and twenty-four feet long. Every one of them weighs ten thousand pounds and on a project like this, we'd have about twenty blasting mats. So there'd be two hundred thousand pounds of potential mat to be able to put on top of the blast to control any fly rock. The second concern is, is damage from ground induced vibrations caused by the actual detonation of the explosives. And what we use for our protection and for the protection of others around us is devices called a seismograph. And a seismograph has two components. It has a geophone and it has a microphone. And what we're measuring is the actual ground vibration moving through the earth and the amount of air that's being moved from each round of blasting. And we have state and federal limits that have been imposed on blasting contractors. And the federal government had to create these regulations back in the nineteen fifties and sixties. One, what, what was happening is that coal mining was expanding and the federal government had blasting operations that were starting to approach on the general public. And they had to just design some ways to regulate the blasting. So they actually built houses and, and they put them on blast sites and they monitored what happened to these houses as the blasting progressed to the blast actually consumed the house. And basically it came down to a, a reading of inches per second. And we have a state limit of two inches per second at forty hertz. And what that is, what that limit is in place to protect is aged horsehair plaster. So even in twenty twenty-one, we're still regulated by, by regulations that were created in the nineteen fifties and sixties to protect aged horsehair plaster. And the town of Farmington has actually reduced that vibration limit by twenty-five percent. So the maximum ground vibration that you can produce in the town of Farmington is an inch and a half per second. So it's a twenty-five percent reduction of what the state and federal guidelines recommend. In addition to Maine Drilling and Blasting setting up seismographs, Ted from Geo Design will also set up seismographs. So there'll be third party monitoring as well as, as our own monitoring. We'll have a very, very good handle on what sort of ground vibrations that we are producing at all four points of the compass for this, for this, for this site. The other thing on this project that is specific to this project is the Kinder Morgan Pipeline. So there's a high pressure gas main that we've identified a couple of times in the drawings. And that, you know, is obviously a concern to us as a blaster. We will have to have an approved blast plan that the pipeline company approves and blesses. And they're going to add another level of regulation or, or monitoring to the blasting process on the site because of their own interest for their pipeline. And at some points they'll even have representation onsite, depending on the proximity from the blast to the, to the existing pipeline. Just to give some context to this particular project, we recently performed a job at Vassar Brothers Medical Hospital in Poughkeepsie, New York. And we had to take out eighty-five thousand yards of rock. I think we said this is about fifteen thousand yards of rock. That process took seven to eight months. There was three to four blasts a day and we were blasting within ten feet of an operating hospital. It got to, you know, and that took a tremendous amount of coordination. We were at a hospital that was doing brain surgeries and eye surgeries and all sorts of medical procedures. And we had a blast there for six or seven months. And it got to the point that it was so routine that the, the staff of the hospital was actually able to set their watches on, on the blast because they knew exactly what time every blast was going to happen and everybody was prepared on how to handle the blast. And that, that project went off without a hitch. Right now, even this week, we're down on I ninety-five where the intersection of I ninety-five and two eighty-seven comes together in Portchester and Rye, New York. And we've, we've been blasting to widen and lower I ninety-five. We've been down there for over a year with almost continuous blasting. Every blast that we do there is within forty or fifty feet of a home or an underground utility or an existing bridge. And I, I just bring these two projects up for some context because this particular project, I don't know if generic is the right term, but this is, this is not an overly complex project for us as a company. And I don't want to say to that to, to belittle it or that means that we would take it lightly. It doesn't matter if we're blasting for an addition at a hospital or for an elementary school or if we're blasting for a pool in the middle of the woods. We treat every project the same. We give it the same level of attention. We provide the same level of safety. And I, that's pretty much all that I have. I don't know if Ted, you have anything else to add or if we want to open it up for questions?
Yeah, I mean, this is Attorney Hollister. Ted, could you take a moment? Did you hear Commissioner Pogson's question before?
Yes, 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 I did. And Commissioner Pogson seemed concerned about the rock possibly fracturing at depth and impacting the lower aquifer. Is that correct, Commissioner?
That is correct.
It's, I understand the question and it, it's not a concern. The, that rock, it, it, as I said, the fracturing of the rock only happens within the radius of the bore holes in, in a certain radius. So that, that bedrock is quite deep. So even if you took more of an extreme case of outside of twenty-five feet, most, the fracturing is really in, in the, the, let's say five feet from the blast hole, maybe five to ten feet. But that aquifer where it's drawing is watered so deep, it's, it's, it's not going to feel anything. Plus, plus the rock is, becomes more, from our borings, we know the rock becomes more intact with depth than basalt does. So it's, it's not an issue.
I want, this is Tim Hollister again. Tom Daley, you'll correct me if I misstate this, but I, we've estimated the total duration, start to finish, of the time within which blasting would occur is about five weeks. And within that five weeks, approximately twenty-one days of blasting. Could you, you and the team just confirm those numbers to make sure I stated them correctly?
Yes, Tim, for the record, Tom Daley, those numbers are accurate. They're correct.
Madam Chair, that's, we'll stop there. If commissioners have any questions.
I'd like to go back to the other commissioners. I thank you for answering Matt's question so diligently, but let's go back and see if Patrick has any questions?
Yeah, Patrick, here are no questions.
Mike?
The only question, I believe I heard four hundred and seventy-five feet. Residences or anybody from the blast location was eligible for a pre-blast survey. How many residences would that count in this?
I don't have it off the top of my head, Ted. I'm kind of looking at the map.
I, I see the distances from the, from the wells to the blast location. Is, is that the distance you use for the wells or to the residence?
We would have looked at both.
Okay.
Shannon, if you zoom in just slightly there, I think.
And the ones that are five hundred, five hundred and fifty feet, four hundred and seventy-five is the number that is, comes out of the Farmington regulation because of our blast plan. If somebody's at five hundred and fifty feet, we're going to offer that survey to. We're not going to draw a magic line at four seventy-five and stop. We don't mind offering some additional pre-blast surveys. It, it's a benefit for the surrounding neighborhood, it's a benefit for us. So where we see five fifty, five thirty-three, those people would be offered pre-blast surveys.
Okay, that was, that was where I was going with it. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry about that. I actually, Tom already answered it. I had a question, how long this will take? So I got the five weeks, twenty-one days of actual blasting. Thank you.
Marcy?
I have no questions at this time. Thanks.
John?
I have no questions.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, hearing, nothing more from the commissioners at this time. It's time to go into public comments on this application. And in this application process, in a Zoom meeting, you need to, on your computer, raise your hand if you want to be heard. We will control the sequence of hand raising here and try to accommodate anyone that wants to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application. That, that is the process we're going to start now. So if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be acknowledged.
Okay, we've got, I've got Donald Barron at the top. If you want to unmute yourself, please, your full name, your address, and then address your, state your questions or comments, please.
Yes, my full name is Donald Barron and I do live at the Garden Gate Association right now. Been living in the town of Farmington since nineteen seventy-two. So I have a big concern about the super, the, the site of the dumping site. Has that ever been vented? Can somebody answer that number one question?
Have it been what?
Vent it, vented for air. So the gases could, could escape.
You can provide all your, your questions and then, so how this works for public comment? Did you provide your comments and questions? And then we'll hear all the public comments and then the applicants will come back and, and address them. If not this evening, then it could be a subsequent evening.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave that. I'd like to know if that site has been vet, vented for escape of gases? And if there's any trichlorethylene or trichlor in that site, that dumping site? I heard there was oil, but I didn't hear any degreases that were ever dumped in that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got Sigrid Nicodemus.
Yeah, that's right.
Sigrid, you're welcome to, if I can get your full name and, and address or association. And you're welcome to address the commission.
I'm here tonight representing the
I'm here tonight representing the Connecticut Botanical Society. My full name is Sigron Nicodemus Skadwa, and the, the address of the botanical society is PO Box 9004, New Haven. My address is 183 Guinevere Ridge, Chester, Connecticut. And I'm... Excuse me?
I just, we had trouble hearing you.
Okay. In this, of this, I think this may be final or close to, close to final meeting, and I just wanted to summarize some points that the botanical society had made at previous meetings, and also present some data that we collected from the seepage wetlands, from the, from the land just immediately east of the property, below the project, below the proposed stormwater basin. And I, I did send email that in, and I presume the commissioners have already gotten it. It's, it's just, it's very, very simple. Just the data shows that the, the mineral profile is very similar to that for profiles collected over basalt bedrock in a, in a large study done in, in the Holyoke Range, which is just north of Connecticut, but the same basalt formation as ours. And the, the levels of calcium and magnesium are, are very much elevated, and the soils are certainly, you know, what you'd expect on a, a trap rock mountain. There's the, the thickness of the, the topsoil over the salt is, is very thin, and that we, you'd expect a lot, a lot of influence of shallow groundwater. Now, this is not the groundwater that's in the Arcos Aquifer, it's the, the perched groundwater that flows downhill over the calc, calcite basalt, and, you know, saturating the soil above that, and picking up minerals from the basalt as it, as it flows downhill, and influencing the soil at the base of the hill. So we, we continue to be really concerned that there was no proper survey done during the growing season of the, of the vegetation and the, the salamanders, the fauna in those wetlands, which are, they're not, not in the open strip that, that you see at the, the base of the hill here. They're, they're actually in the edge of the woods. There's a swath of, of 10 to 35 foot feet of wetlands within the edge of the woods. And, so, just a quick point, the, the, the actual data that we got back from the soil nutrient lab at Storrs is attached and could be confusing if you look at it, because it's, the results are given in pounds per acre. To get the results to be parts per million, you just divide by two, and the, the levels of calcium are approximately 2,000 ppm. The levels of magnesium are more like 2, 225, 250. I want to say there's, in the, the table, my explanatory table, I did miss, miss a one in the, the calcium column, the second number should, greater than 2,000, the second one should be 1533, 1533. It's 533. That's a, that's an error, but the, the data in, in the attached file is correct. I, I wanted to, um, just repeat that we've had a lot of discussion of the deep aquifer, the potential for movement of methane and/or other toxins from the landfill, and it's certainly clear that they're not going to move up slope, uphill. What has been the concern of the botanical society all along is the interruption of the shallow groundwater flow over the basalt layer, and in contact with the basalt layer through the topsoil, through the deep topsoil, the excellent topsoil, and, and then into the, the edge wetlands. And that, that's the, that is the issue that never was properly, properly addressed. In terms of, we, I just want to repeat the, the point that was made in our first January 25th report that we, we recommend retaining the existing low-density residential zoning on this erodible hillside terrain, because trap rock soils just, they, they weather into Weathersfield loams, into fine textured, highly erosible soils. It's just part of their, it's the mineralogy of the basalt and the, and the way it weathers, the type of soil that's formed from it. The, these are, are, are soft soils that are easily dislodged by flowing water or, or raindrops. It's been quantified in the, in tables and, you know, either online or in the old soils reports. And not only are these hillsides often steep, you know, fif, nah, 15 to 25% sometimes, and they, they, the soil that forms on them is, is, is very, very soft and readily weathered, readily dislodged, and it also settles out very poorly in catch basin sumps, in four bays. It's not meantable to standard stormwater management systems. And the, the biodiversity that develops on, on this type of topsoil that develops on, on the basalt bedrock is substantially higher and of more value than that on sandstone or metamorphic bedrock types. And so the, the botanical society is, is concerned about this particular site, but it's concerned about all the, the undeveloped trap rock slopes, and the importance that they have for connectivity and, and for wildlife populations, and the threats that their development poses to the wetland and water course resources at the bottom of the hill. And, you know, you, I'm sure you know that sand settles out fast, gravel settles out fast, and silt and clay are much, much slower, and then what you end up having is much longer distance transport of the sediment that's unavoidably released during construction, during road construction, during that period, that initial period, and, you know, also stone dust that's released during blasting is also very, it's, it's a fine dust that settles very slowly. So we're, we're urging you to just to realize that there, the impact from, from low-density residential homes, hopefully without artificial illumination that's kept on all night, hopefully with relatively small lawns, so that there's plenty of remaining forest around them, and plenty of natural soil to absorb pollutants and attenuate them, so that the quality of the groundwater that's reaching the wetlands at the base of the hill, and in this case pointing to a reservoir, which already has an invasive, invasive plant, aquatic invasive plant problem that will be exacerbated by increases in nitrogen and phosphorus, and, you know, just eroding sediment carries phosphorus. It's a major source of phosphorus to the downstream aquatic systems. So, but if, if you, if you maintain, the, the intensity of impact is much lower from the dispersed residential development than it is from high-intensity projects like, like this one. And the infiltration and, and passage of, of contaminated water through buffers can achieve nearly 100% or a full 100% removal of nutrients and other pollutants. And stormwater management systems, and this was mentioned in other reports, is the, the best of them, well-designed, well, well-built, well-maintained, are, are in the, you know, 40 to 75% range for, for nitrogen and phosphorus, you know, according to all the stormwater centers, Hampshire, Minnesota, Maryland, and that, that's just a fact of life. And also the, the swirl separators, they're wonderful for extracting sand and, and coarser sediments. They do not take out soluble pollutants or fine textures, fine pollutants, and that's just a technological limit of, that, and those are the kinds of things that are, that are used with a, with a larger, large project like this. So, so we, we urge, we urge that first, that you really require thorough surveys, biological surveys for projects on trap rock slopes and at wet, and in wetlands at the base of trap rock slopes. Really document the biodiversity and, and that you retain the zoning that, that is in place now. And if you, if you have any questions, I guess the, I should note that the second piece of laboratory data is just, just documenting that the current nitrate, nitrate level is very low in the water that we sampled from one of the seep, the seepage wetlands, as would be expected, even though there are, are homes up gradient. It's, it's, was, was about a half a milli, half a milligram per liter. So I, I, I think that's all, and we appreciate the opportunity to, to testify and hope that people will really appreciate the incredible tall, magnificent forests that are on this, on the base of Talbot Mountain, and, and the, we haven't seen them yet. I expect there's all sorts of interesting ferns and wildflowers and such as that will be sprouting, and will, unless they're obliterated by the proposed, proposed stormwater management system and, and facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few more hands raised. So next up is Debbie. We will open up your, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, we'll need your full name, address, and you can address the commission.
Hi, my name's Deborah Brom. I live at 131 Mountain Spring Road here in Farmington, and I'm opposed to the proposition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sharon. If you want to go ahead and unmute, again, name and address, please.
My name is Sharon Abramczek, and I live at 2K Talbot Forest Road. It's a taste of property to this development on the other side of Prattling Pond. It's a large condo development with a lot of rental units that has been here for years. I don't understand why we're considering this, what I think is very invasive and scary development. I mean, just listening to talking about the blasting and the pre-blasting survey and all of that is, why are we doing this? What happened to 230? What happened to the ghost mall? That's what I call it now, where, you know, Lowman's was, and they kicked out all the tenants, and they were going to build there. What happened to that? We need to develop that. That's, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, our next, next on the list is Allison.
Hi, I'm Helen Rose. I live on Maiden Lane. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone being here at 9:30 at, on a Monday night. I have four questions that I'll try and run through pretty quickly. I'm pretty sure the Meta Comet Trail runs on Prattling Pond Road, and how visible will this be from the Meta Comet Trail, and has that been considered? And I had to join late, so these questions might have already been addressed, so I apologize if they're repetitive, but is there any low-income housing that will be part of this? And is there still a market for so many apartments? I know that the housing boom is like, still kind of happening, and it's more of a seller's market at this point, but going forward, this isn't going to be open for a couple of years, so what are the predictions on that? And then this is a question for the companies that are involved. How many minorities, including women, work at the companies who will be like, performing this work? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, um, all right, next up, Martin Pizzani.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Martin Pizzani. I live at 99 Mountain Spring Road. I've lived in Farmington since 1983, and I just wanted to voice my opposition to this proposal. I think you've done a good job of assuring us that it can be done. I think the real question is, should it be done? And I think this is an inappropriate location for development of this type. That's all I have to say. I'm in opposition.
Thank you. Okeydoke. All right, next up, we have Terry Corson.
Hi, Shannon, thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry Corson, I live at 52 Prattling Pond Road, and I oppose, I oppose this project. We've lived here for 17 years now, and everyone who has chosen to make Prattling Pond their home has done so for similar reasons. This neighborhood is beautiful, it is peaceful, and it is nature-filled neighborhood. The privacy of the R-80 zoning was a major consideration when deciding to build here. Allowing this zone change and project continuation could jeopardize the safety of our drinking water. It will impact our home structure, and it will undoubtedly lower the value of all of our homes significantly. It was stated tonight that the majority of Prattling Pond homes would not see the new building. While all of them may not see it, they will all hear it. They will hear the construction intimately during the excavation and construction. We will all hear the highway due to the removal of the trees and the open space that protects us today. We will all also share in the new traffic on Farmington Avenue. The parking lot, the lighting, the noise pollution from these 146 new neighborhoods... My house directly abuts the building lot, 154 feet from the new proposed building. Our family will see this 450-foot monstrosity. In fact, there's no part of our home or our property which will retain any privacy, and this project will forever change the character of this unique neighborhood. Based on the 150, maybe 200 letters of opposition that were submitted recently to the town, notably growing as more residents are learning of this, we realize that we're not alone and know that this is not the right location for this massive development, which is being wedged into the northern corner, corner of their property. The residents of Farmington rely on the town planning and zoning to do what's best for our town over the wants of a developer. Please do the right thing and vote against this zone change. I thank you for taking the time to hear me tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next I have, the light, this keeps moving, I've got Lorraine Powers.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Lorraine Powers. I live at 14 Farmington Ridge Drive here in Farmington, which is the neighborhood which, to the south of Prattling Pond on the other side of Route 4. And we are continuous along the Meta Comet Trail. I had spoke at the January meeting. One notable point is, while I've heard some very extensive presentations on the technical and development of the parcel, the purpose of this, um, these meetings is a zoning change. And unfortunately, there's been no compelling reason for why this, this development warrants a zoning change and why this should be on this specific parcel of, of property. And I know the former Lomans Plaza Talcott Notch is one of several vacant parcels that would meet the needs for this. I've also looked into the availability of affordable housing in the area. There are a significant number of rental units still available, so I don't think we have the demand, which was one of the points mentioned by a commissioner questioning that or saying, we're in support of affordable housing, but we, we aren't sure of that in this immediate area. I also brought up the very serious matter where, um, a number of years ago, Matush Matalewski, a freshman in, from Farmington High School, uh, got off of a bus at Farm Glen Road, which is about 150 feet away from this proposed, um, bus stop for Quarry Road, and was killed by an oncoming car, who based on the traffic, the car did not have a chance to stop. This was a tragedy. And I'm hoping that each of the commissioners did go back in an article that's clearly and easy accessible to see the severity of what would be of an enhanced burden of traffic on the road, the limited space for students at a bus stop, not only students that currently and perhaps in the future will be crowded, socially distanced, carrying backpacks, lunches, musical instruments. This is a, a big safety issue. The potential, um, for this is just not the right location. So while we've seen a very well-developed plan, it does not address the zoning, the request for a zoning change of why specifically it has to be on this site. So, um, I oppose this. I'd be happy to answer any questions of my reasoning and, um, hope that the committee supports the many people of Farmington, along with me, who've also opposed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'm going to go to Yvonne Gardner.
Well, this isn't, this is not Yvonne, but this is Greg Gardner.
Andy Vonn.
You know, I, I have to say, you know, I'm a lifelong resident of East Farmington for 16 years now, and I personally witnessed the overdevelopment of this side of town over the years and, you know, traffic on my once, you know, butic road, abysmal, I'm on 262 Mall Road. During rush hour, it is, it's absolutely insane, you know, we, as, as, uh, my wife and I walk every morning during the pandemic, uh, with our dogs, we're literally risking our lives every morning walking down my street. Never mind backing out of our driveway, adding 146 apartments right down the road, um, is the thing, it really is. The, the over, the over development of this area is, is going on long enough. Enough is enough, you know? I mean, I understand that, you know, the argument for, for building all these apartments over here is the, um, to satisfy the, the building of all these medical buildings and everything that's going on in South Road, um, to satisfy the, uh, you know, the people who need to work there. I get that, but, I mean, Lomans Plaza seems a better alternative for that, you know, although I'm against, you know, adding traffic to this area. I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense at this point, I mean, to add more, I mean, we're still building down here on, on South Road. Everything that's going on, I mean, there's, there's so much traffic on this, in this area at this point. It's really above and beyond what, 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 you know, it's dangerous at this point, you know, never mind what's going on. The, I, I wonder if, taken into account, I've heard nothing about these farms and what's going to happen with adding that many apartments on this side of town, what's going to happen with, with the school system? What happens with these farms? What, I mean, can, can it handle that kind of intake on, on students? And can, uh, Irving Robbins handle that kind of intake on students as, as things move on? I mean, the, uh, all these, I've heard no, no conversation on this whatsoever. Um, you know, in addition to the traffic concerns and, and the school issues and everything that's going on here, I think, you know, the, the plan is too big, you know, the buildings are too tall, buildings are too ugly. Um, I'm always in favor of preserving open land, and I'm perplexed that it, that it's so important for the developer to build these units, and they don't even consider the Lomans Plaza location, which is empty and will require a zoning, won't require a zoning change. You know, again, I'm against all the, you know, the increase of traffic in the area, but at the same time, I think, uh, Lomans would probably be a better solution on a smaller scale. And that's how I feel about that.
And I second that feeling that Greg has said as well.
Okay, you can't, oh, I'm sorry, is that Yvonne? I'm sorry. Sorry, I thought I had somebody else.
No, that's, that's okay, that's okay.
I was talking out of turn, my apologies. Got it?
That's quite all right. No, and then I, of course, I feel the same as Greg does in, in regards to, you know, I've been here over 30 years myself, and to see what, the encroachment of medical buildings and, and this neck of the woods, it's really, makes me want to move out of Farmington because I, it's, uh, not what I, um, wrote, you know, raised our children and, and I feel for the people around us in neighboring, uh, streets, so I hope.
And our, and our property values at the same time.
Correct.
You know, I mean, we've, uh, East Farmington has taken enough of the burden of Farmington for the tax base. So, that's how I feel about that. Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, next I've got, um, I've got Kate Emery. Kate, if you want to unmute your microphone, you should be able to address the commission.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Kate Emery. Uh, I live here with my husband at 74 Prattling Pond Road, and we are both strongly opposed. Um, I think a lot of people have brought up a lot of the very good points. I think, um, most closely, I feel with, uh, Lorraine Powers in her, uh, statement that basically regardless of all the concerns that get addressed, um, for better or for worse, I think the big thing is, why the heck are we doing this? I don't see any compelling reason to go forward with this building. It's out of scale. Uh, my husband described it as a hippo in a kiddie pool, and I think visually that really helps me sort of get a sense of the scale of this thing. It's insane to have that right next to residential, um, a, a residential area that's zoned for, for two acres. So to, to go from two acre to, to, to whatever this ends up being, I think is, um, is, is, is out of character and, um, really shouldn't be, uh, happening. And so I am strongly, uh, strongly opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I've got Haley Colding.
Thank you. My name is Haley Colding, and I am speaking representing the Connecticut Botanical Society's Ecology and Conservation Committee in strongly opposing the proposed zoning change and the development. The development site is ecologically important, both as a trap rock habitat and because of the wetlands that exist down ingredient of the site. In previous meetings, uh, we heard quite a bit about the importance of those wetlands, but because there was still some question about, is this truly a bona fide trap rock site? I wanted to call your attention to new analysis of soil samples by the Yukon Nutrient Analysis Laboratory in Storrs, Connecticut. Just to emphasize that this site truly is part of the important and iconic trap rock habitats of Connecticut, uh, which are such a natural treasure, which are part of the wealth and beauty of our state's natural resources and which are honestly quite small and quite vulnerable. So by analyzing soil samples, the Yukon Labs found strongly elevated calcium and magnesium levels that are consistent with previously documented and previously measured trap rock sites, um, including the Holy Oak Site. This data, as well as significantly more data addressed in minutia that I won't get into for this meeting, um, but that has been shared with the commission, is evidence that the site we're looking at is a trap rock habitat that deserves and merits protection. Because the runoff from this site will impact the wetlands below it, because the soils as Weathersfield loam are quite erosable, we strongly recommend retaining the current lows, low-density residential zoning on this erosable hillside terrain. Um, and we recognize that the zoning commission does have jurisdiction over erosion and sedimentation. Um, so we really, really hope that the commission will consider this in opposing the development. We also wanted to note that whereas elevated calcium and magnesium foster growth and the spread and survival of many less common native wildflowers, the development would also cause elevations of nitrogen and phosphorus. Both nitrogen and phosphorus are macronutrients that rather than fostering these important and sometimes uncommon wildflowers, would instead foster the growth of invasive plant species and common plant species, changing the composition of the whole plant communities, which as we know, also impacts important species like pollinators, insects, um, and other vertebrates. So given these ecological impacts, given the voices of so many residents who don't want to see the landscape blemished in this way, we strongly oppose the development.
Thank you very much. All right, next I see Jennifer Proto.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Okay, please go ahead, identify yourselves and your address and address your comments to the commission. Jennifer, are you still there? Uh, Jennifer, we're having trouble hearing you. I don't, perhaps you want to try calling back in or use a different line? Yep, or if you want to try again, Jennifer, you're welcome to, but right now, we'll move on to, uh, to another, uh, another resident for comment. Um, let's see here, I've got Ashley Raphael.
Yes, my name is Joan Yzerzki. I live at 140 Mountain Spring Road, and I want it noted that I oppose this structure immensely due to the effect on the wildlife. Anyone that lives around in this area can understand the beautiful wildlife and, and forestry and things that our town has come to stand for to protect these environments. And I just think it is not in the right place. The overload of the traffic, I can hardly get home as it is or go out anytime, and I just want it known that I oppose it so, so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next, let's see here, I've got, uh, Simran.
Yeah, hi. I am Simran from the Connecticut Botanical Society. I would like to speak on this topic as I oppose this particular proposal because at the particular site that we are going to have the building constructed, there is a productive vernal pool located with state-listed eastern box turtles and other rare species that lie at that base of that ridge close to the proposed project. So, once there's the apartment buildings are constructed, we will have lightings around, and these lightings have ecological impacts on the terrestrial organisms. We know in this, they will be affecting the insects, the plant population, and in terrestrial ecosystem, insects are members of food webs and are important pollinators. And then this large number of insects will be attracted to the artificial lighting, especially the street lights, and the insects do not have the ability to resist the stimulus of light, making them sensitive to artificial night lighting. Also, in plants, we will, plants also affect, are affected due to this lighting, the extent, there could be extensive growth of this particular communities of plants. Also, for the, there is for the artificial lightning, there would directly impact plant-animal interactions. It can interrupt light use between the host and insect, hence modifying interactions that affect herbivore pollination and seed dispersal. It can also affect plant-animal interaction indirectly by affecting one or both species indirectly. With the amphibians that I spoke about, the box turtles located at the base of the ridge close to the proposed project, we know amphibians, due to their high sensitivity to environment changes, they are considered to be important indicators of the environment. We know amphibians are nocturnally active, and light pollution has led to declines in their population. We know they have melatonin, which is inhibited by light and produced only during darker period, and under And under light and, and under constant light, inhibition of melatonin production adversely affect the functioning of the salamanders. So there would be impact of this lights on the terrestrial organisms. So I think I, that this project should not go ahead, and I oppose this particular project.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, uh, let's see here, Nathan Dunbeck.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Nathan. I grew up in the condominium complex. I'm still here. Just looks to be on this map east of the proposed site of development. I wanted to kind of piggyback off what Hayden Colding had said about the trap rock environments. If you go in, I believe Burlington, Decession Woods, there are vernal pools that are kind of maintained by the staff there. I mean, these are very important historical sites of, I mean, just really old ecosystems that should not have apartment buildings built on them. It seems tone deaf. Not to mention, we have a giant abandoned building complex that had, you know, lots of locally owned businesses that sits empty. We could use that, that's been said. I mean, it just seems an obvious decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Donald Barron, do you have another comment for the commission?
Yes, I'm sorry, you can hear me once again, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, planning and zoning, for taking me once again. I just brought up the environmental side with the dumping site, but as far as traffic, I, my wife and I have a long, long history, and I'll make this quick. From the early seventies at 205, living on Old Mallon Road, and traveling towards 84, the rush hour probably would be four to six. And now that we live the last 20 years almost at Garden Gate Association next to the gardeners on Two Mile Road, we see that the rush hour could last anywhere from three to 7:30 at night. And this is even with the pandemic going on right now. So my wife and I are very, we're opposed to this adding another 146 units. With the elevations that they told us in the meeting, being at 390 to 360 in Farmington Avenue, a four-story building will show up at Farmington Avenue. It's going to be a site sore. And Garden Gate was built with wetlands. We preserved five wetlands on our properties over here at 38, 38 homes. I think getting rid of wetlands in that area would be a big mistake for the town of Farmington. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I got a hand raised, I got a couple hands raised on the other side. Okay. Attorney Shansky, go right ahead. You should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Marjorie Shansky, and I represent Mr. and Mrs. Douglas Zaitunjin, who own and reside with their family at the property at 42 Prattling Pond Road. They are petitioning intervenors in these proceedings. We will address their environmental concerns in a later part of this meeting. And Ms. Rutherford, if you could post page five of my letter, it would be appreciated. I want to echo what Mr. Pazani said in his comments this evening. There's a lot of time, two hours almost, of testimony about the implementation of this plan when the threshold question is the propriety of making the zone change. And there's a lot to be said about that, some of which you've heard from members of the public already. And many of which, many of the concerns that I have incorporated into this letter, a page of which is now projecting. It's a letter dated March 18th, and I hope that the commission has had an opportunity to review it. I extracted in it some questions of the commission that were tendered at the January meeting. I mined the minutes of the January meeting for the questions that had been asked by some of the commissioners and to which adequate answers had not yet been provided. We have obtained a lot of information this evening, but I would submit that even with respect to the so-called rock removal, that the testimony of the geotechnical engineer was that we're going to design a program, which means they haven't designed a program, as I hear it. And even though we've heard a lot of information about how this or that can be done, I don't think we have specifics on how this will be done, nor do we have an application for the intensive construction special permit that the town engineer called out in his memo to you dated January 6th, and which I also discussed in my letter. So among the topics that I discussed were the alleged walkability of the proposed development, a proposition that has been dispelled as a reality in Mr. Brian Miller's planning report and testimony to the commission, and which frankly is patently obvious to you, based on your familiarity with the site and its environs. There's a long driveway proposed, there are not sidewalks. Those are real-world features that undermine the assertions of the applicant. And a major concern discussed in my letter had to do with the rock removal, as I say, a lot has been provided to you this evening by way of information. But I do call the commission's attention to the purpose section of the special permit associated with the intensive construction activity permit, and all of the adverse impacts that are associated with it for the benefit of the, or to the detriment of the neighbors in proximity. The regulation describes the standards that the town has developed to prevent or diminish such effects, but it's unclear to me why a permit of that nature, especially based on the information we've received this evening, would not have been requested. It's such an intrusive activity for the landscape and so disruptive to the neighbors, shouldn't that be part of the threshold inquiry into the propriety of the use? It is a special permit use. It does fall into those range of uses that broadly carry the rubric that they are permitted uses, but they are given an individualized assessment as to the negative externalities associated with them, and to determine whether they are tolerable and manageable through conditions of approval. But there's no inherent promise in the application for a special permit that one will get a special permit. A commission has the discretion to find its standards unmet, and indeed, your regulations say as much. So that merits additional information from the applicant, and it merits much more consideration by the commission. And I raise in my letter of the 18th, that piece of property between the proposed development site and the land recently conveyed to the Farmington Land Trust, and that was responsive to a question, I believe, from Commissioner Pogson, asking what was intended, and the applicant replied, "We haven't studied it." I suggest that it begs credulity that that land simply sits as some placeholder for some benign future intent. Given the aggressive development proposal that brings us all here this evening, there's simply no rational way to draw that conclusion, and more needs to be said about it. But then we get to the core issue of both the floating zone and the special innovation zone that wants to be landed in this place and the uses to which this parcel wants to be put. Dr. Clemens, Mr. Pennell, Mr. Miller, and later this evening, Mr. Trinkus will discuss, although the others have already discussed, the planning issues associated with development, with this development, and the inconsistency of the proposed development under the Plan of Conservation and Development as amended in Farmington. The applicant has, of course, asserted plan consistency in an exercise with which we are all familiar, mining the P O C D for statements that support the position we are espousing. But that is not enough, because the power of observation is required, and as is the application of common sense. The proposed site abuts a beautiful residential neighborhood that is defined in large part by its adjacency to natural resources of the town, which the town itself has acknowledged in prior study for itself and with other communities, and about which we've heard a lot this evening. And in your Plan of Conservation and Development, you have expressed those conservation values. Unlike the proposed development, development under the existing zoning parameters would represent an opportunity to have a true reconciliation of conservation and development. The pending proposal does not. And this is the true apparent failure of consistency with the P O C D that dictates against the required findings of Section 31(c)(1, 2, and 3), that the proposed use is in harmony with the overall objective of the Plan of Conservation and Development, that the proposed plan is superior to a plan possible under existing zoning, and that the proposal is in harmony with the actual or permitted development of adjacent properties. Under the evidence that has been received by this commission, from all of the experts whose names I've recited, and from the many members of the public who have spoken to you on prior and this evening, and from the literally hundreds of letters that you are receiving from members of the community in Farmington, it is submitted that the commission is unable to make those findings. And that is who else recognizes the incongruity of this proposal, all of the citizens of Farmington who have stood up to express themselves to you. A floating zone is not a vanity zone used to accomplish the single-minded goals of one applicant. Floating zones represent a flexible zoning tool whose use has been popularized, if you will, as a post-Euclidean technique to avoid the ills of strict Euclidean zoning with its emphasis on the separation of uses, bulk, and height of structures. And over the time that we've used Euclidean zoning as the primary vehicle in land use regulation, it has resulted in what is commonly acknowledged as sprawl, unnecessary and ill-advised fragmentation of ecological landscapes, and automobile dependency contributing to undesirable emissions of greenhouse gases. The floating zone has value for its ability to conform to characteristics of land and to serve as an antidote to the conventional results of Euclidean zoning. But this application achieves none of those salutary goals. It is not a walkable development. It will not get people out of their cars. It is severing a wildlife corridor with accompanying ecological consequences, and it is sprawl of intensive development encroaching into the backyards of an existing residential neighborhood. This is a manifestation of a zone that serves the interest of the developer and not the interests of the community as a whole, and that is violative of a simple principle of Connecticut law. This does not represent an opportunity for the commission to exercise its authority other than in the interest of the community as a whole, and to reject the application to land the special innovation district on this site. This rendering that is on the screen is on page five of my letter. It is based off of materials in the application and a view from my client's property. It is not an appropriate use. It is an urbanization, an opportunistic change in the landscape without a land use regulatory basis, in fact. I urge the commission to please review the content of my letter. We will be back to speak with you later in this meeting or next time about the adverse environmental impacts associated with this development. And I would simply say finally that in my letter, I also discuss the issue of whether multifamily housing is a standalone use in this zoning district. I think a point that was raised in the letter to which the chair made reference in her opening comments and advice from the town council, that advice has not been shared with the public at large. So to, from my perspective, that issue remains alive and well and subject to further consideration and perhaps further discussion. And, and we urge you to deny this proposal as ill-advised and inappropriate for the site. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm just making a note. Hang with me, folks, for a second. Okay. All right, I have Attorney Ainsworth. You're up. You can unmute yourself. Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the stamina that everyone's exhibiting this evening. As you know, I'm Keith Ainsworth. I represent Lynn and Richard Fitchman, owners of the property at 38 Prattling Pond Road, which abuts the subject property where there's zone change and site plan review are proposed. Together, Lynn and Richard represent a larger and growing group of neighbors who are opposed to this project for the same reasons that other projects to the site were rejected by this commission in the past, but mainly because the project is at the margins of the district where this project could be proposed. And it's distinctly in conflict with the existing residential neighborhood. I noticed that actually remarkably, you know, it's, the citizen comment often is quite illuminating. The reason why we have public comment is precisely because we heard one, I think Ms. Powers said it best, you know, this is a zone change application. The threshold question to be asked this evening and throughout this proceeding is whether the applicant should be allowed to change the zone. I have no doubt that this is a feasible project, that you could actually physically construct it. The real question is, should you? Should you change the zone from what it is to something different? And it's an important point to consider, because the first consideration when changing a zone in your regulations said, in fact, I'll quote it, "In considering applications, the commission shall require compliance with the following. Number one, that the existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the zone and/or uses to be located will be protected." The reason this is so is because where different uses reside at the margins of a district, there is the greatest possibility or probability of conflict and lack of compatibility, and an existing neighborhood may not be protected. And in this case, I think the image that is being projected from Attorney Shansky's letter demonstrates, I think, the lack of compatibility. The fine homes in this neighborhood look very different from this architecturally and also in scale. And actually, if you look at that photograph, my client's property would be to the, to the right of that photograph, but Mr. Corson's property is even closer than the Zaitunjins', and he would be to the left of this photograph. His view is going to be probably even more visible and significant. So the second consideration when changing a zone in your regulations, number two, is that adequate safeguards have been taken to protect adjacent property and the neighborhood in general from detriment. Now, we heard a little bit about that kind of thing from a technical standpoint, but I think most of the neighbors are just as concerned about the quality and, and character of the neighborhood. Their backyards are as close as physically possible as you could make this project be without actually trespassing. I mean, it meets the setbacks, but the, the project has been pushed right to the northeast corner as close as you can get. And in fact, to the Corson property, it's only 150 feet. And actually, that's to the house, but if you actually get to the property line, it's even closer. So again, placing a four-story apartment building in the view shed of a neighborhood chosen for its natural surroundings and view does not protect the neighborhood. It erodes it. Another consideration in your regulations, it's number five, but that the basic design of the proposed uses or buildings and the relationship between the buildings and the land, and overall physical appearance of the proposed uses or buildings will be in general harmony. So again, look at the photograph, is the appearance of that in general harmony with the surrounding neighborhood? And, and then further, your, your standard, the standard that you need to apply is, and will it not, you have to ask the question, will it not serve to blight or detract from abutting residences or other property? I think there's, well, it's certainly subjective. I think if you have a property that has a view of lawn and trees, I think if you have a property that has a view of, of lawn and trees and then uprises something that essentially looks like a prison blockhouse, right on your view. And, and I, and that's not being overly dramatic, honestly. That is a large brick building that looks like it's, maybe should be just at the end of Route fifteen towards, you know, the, the entryway to New York. It, it's not what you expect in, in Farmington. And certainly not in this neighborhood. And so it's going to dominate the view from some of these houses. That's not protecting the neighborhood. It's, again, eroding it. The, the Fitchmans are not asking the commission to deny the application to utilize the property. They're asking you to not allow this, them to use this property in the most intensive fashion possible, jammed up as close as physically possible against the neighboring houses. The, the applicant could have proposed a medical office, which would have had less parking, less activity, fewer air conditioning units, less lighting, greater compatibility. They have other options that don't clash so jarringly with the neighbors. Your job as a commission is to protect that contract between the community and its citizens, not just development at any cost. You know, there is a social contract that, that is zoning. It basically says, here's the zoning rules that apply. And those rules will protect you from, you know, free-form zoning that anybody can do anything they want with, with their property. We don't do that. We do it, zoning came to be for a reason because people would, would start to do things that were what they wanted to do, but weren't compatible. And that's a contract that you have with your own citizens, that you will protect them. They rely on it. They invest in it. And so the philosophy of development at any cost truly has a, a real, and dare I say unfair, cost to my clients and their neighborhood. If this project were in the middle of the district where this overlay is allowed, closer to UConn Medical Center, and was surrounded by similar uses, the applicant would be truly something difficult to deny. Interesting, Metro Realty owns two other parcels near Munson Road and South Road where this would be the case. At those other locations, Lowens Plaza, South Road, the sites would not only be truly walkable, but they would not clash with existing homes. The, you know, the walkability, I thought the very first slide when the applicant started to present said, you know, it's a walkable solution. I, I wrote it down, but, you know, a walkable housing solution. And, and I thought that was probably the, the one comment that they really couldn't sustain in, in incredible fashion. There's an enormously long driveway up and down a hill, and there's no sidewalks on their side of the street. There's no proof or any evidence in the record that suggests that there may be sidewalks coming in the near future. The walkability of this particular site is, is more aspirational than real. As I said, there are other sites within the, within the, within the zone area that this overlay can be placed. And, and this isn't really the, the one. My clients also have filed an intervention petition under the Environmental Protection Act. We've addressed that earlier. And we adopt attorney Shansky's clients' positions on that. But I, before I conclude, I'd just like to go back to, what does the commission have to find in order to make this zone change? And one, that the, the proposal is in harmony with the overall objective of the plan of conservation and development. I can't imagine the plan of conservation and development really intends to erode some neighborhoods at the expense of, of housing where you have other options. Then number two, the proposed project is superior to a plan possible under the existing zoning regulation for the parcel. We prepared and previously submitted conceptual alternatives of less intent, of a less intensive use, a triplex residential complex that is more freestanding and less of a block, a, a true mixed use and an office concept, each of which has superior compatibility. Of course, these alternatives have not been fully designed, and they're completely dismissed by the applicant as unworkable, and, and they, they start picking at the details. But, but the fact is, the applicant has proposed no other possible scenarios. We've at least come up with conceptual designs that are more compatible and that would work both under the overlay and under the existing zoning. And finally, you have to find that the proposed is in harmony with the actual or permitted development of adjacent properties. We've earlier presented reasoned arguments why this looming block apartment complex is not in harmony with the adjacent single-family home neighborhood. Most importantly, we presented reasoned arguments based on the plain language of the special innovation zone regulations that multifamily use must be part of a mixed use to enjoy the benefit of this zone overlay. And in fact, that would be, a mixed use development would be a, a more compatible way of utilizing the overlay if you were going to go that route. So as such, the commission may not approve the application as presented. It just doesn't meet the standards that are required for a zone change. So I, I will conclude there for now and, and, and just say that you have the, you have a plan that's possible to construct, but not without risk of harm to the residential and natural environment, and a plan certainly not in harmony with the surrounding uses. And finally, a plan which the applicant has not demonstrated to be superior to a plan under existing zoning. So my clients respectfully request that you, you deny this application and require them to present something that's at least within the, the realm of reason of compatibility. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have another public comment. Jennifer Proto.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I did submit some comments via email, but I won't reiterate those. I just wanted to speak as a parent of two students at East Farms School because I think the topic of school capacity came up in someone else's testimony. And there was a letter sent about a week ago, March fifteenth, from the principal saying that they're reviewing several options to address spacing and enrollment needs. And one proposal is to have incoming kindergarten students attend Noah Wallace for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That means that students who are in the East Farms School District and who may have siblings in the older grades, they would attend kindergarten in Noah Wallace and then have to go back or, or start again at East Farms for first grade. That's the extent to which East Farms enrollment is increasing at, at such a rate that they can't fit all the grades in the school anymore. So the, the potential of adding a hundred and forty-six units is obviously only going to exacerbate that problem. And obviously, then there's a trickle down if, if the kindergarten doesn't fit. And, you know, then the following year, it's going to be the first grade and, and so on and so forth. And then I think everything else has been covered. I think attorney Shansky had a lot of excellent points. You know, there is seven criteria to comply with in order to get a zone change, and that's a high bar by design. And I don't think that this proposal, quite frankly, passes any of them, particularly with regards to the protecting of the neighborhood character, traffic, you know, conditions, environment, and public services when you think of the schools. So I, I don't see how, how the commission could do anything but deny this application. And that's, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So at this point, at this point, we have another public comment. Okay. It just popped up. Okay. Initial CS. Please name, name and address, please, and you can address the commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Of a Chris Sparks, Mountain Spring Road. I just want to go on record and say that I vote and I am opposed to this. And like everybody else that's attended this meeting, I'm sure they're very active in their voting as well. I've heard mentioned that maybe the Talk at Plaza could be used as well. I think you'll find equal pushback, just to the developer, of course, to that location as well, just because of various reasons. Very simply, we don't want it. He wants to do one thing, we want, we don't want that. That's the bottom line.
Okay, is that all?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for calling in this evening. Is that it? Well, that's it for verbal comments. And there's about a hundred written comments. So.
But we're not going to read a hundred written comments.
Well, no, I'm not reading them into the record, but normally I do show them on the screen. But I think I'm going to defer since we have intervener. We have to include them in the record.
Didn't you post them on the town?
They're posted online, but what I, for consistency, what I have been doing is showing them on the screen. So, but I think I'm going to defer to the next meeting because normally during a hearing, you'd still, yes, we receive comments from X, Y, and Z people. So I think I'm going to defer sharing the written comment to the next meeting. They are posted online. They have been distributed to the commission members and all parties. So certainly not diminishing the written comments that have been received in any fashion. But we will, I think, proceed to the Zitugian, unless there's, and I'm not seeing any other public comments, there's no other hands raised. So at this point, we'll proceed to the Zitugian intervener presentation with the understanding that the written comments will be shared. We'll pop that in at the front end of the meeting at the, when we convene again in April so that we can keep this end of things, the verbal dialogue, keep that moving while we still have some stamina this evening.
Good evening again. If, if that reference to the Zitungians petition is my cue, good evening.
It is.
Thank you so much. It's attorney Margaret Shansky. And the Zitungians are on the line, as is Steve Trinkas, a professional engineer. And I do have some comments to make with respect to the petition, but I think in the interest of keeping this meeting moving, I will ask Mr. Trinkas to share his observations about the stormwater management.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Stephen Trinkas. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut with an office down in Southbury. And I was retained by Ms. Shansky and her clients to do an engineering review of the project with a focus on stormwater management. If I could ask, Shannon, could you pull up sheet number six of the applicant's plan set, if possible?
Well, that would have been fabulous to know before now.
Well, I can start without it, but if you can, that would be appreciated. But I can go on.
Think about where I'm going to find it at this particular point in time easily.
We can just, we can skip it. I can go through my comments without it. So. The stormwater management report by the applicant, it, it stated on two, page two of their report that they have multiple water quality measures being proposed, and they list them as four-foot-deep sumps for catch basins, hydrodynamic separators, riprap energy dissipators, sediment for bay, and retention storage. First off, riprap energy dissipators are not a practice. Yes, this plan is fine. So, you know, riprap energy dissipators is simply a tool to slow water coming out of a pipe before you discharge it onto the ground. It's not a water quality treatment measure. It does nothing for water quality. A sediment for bay also is not a standalone treatment device. It is a component of any type of stormwater basin that is listed within the Connecticut D E P two thousand and four stormwater manual. Retention storage also is not a particular practice. Retention storage is simply a term for the storage within any type of practice. Four-foot-deep catch basin sumps and hydrodynamic separators have been considered and are still considered as secondary water quality practices by the two thousand and four D E P manual. Even though there's been a lot of monitoring of them, they are still not great at addressing water quality. Separators as a class have been around since the mid nineteen ninety's. All of the separators from back then going forward, they all do have an internal bypass. However, the configuration used by the applicant here is an online configuration, and I've heard the argument on many other applications, well, it has an internal bypass. And it's my professional opinion and also from a lot of literature review that it doesn't work that way. What happens is all of the runoff winds up going through these separators, and any material, particularly coarse sediments that have settled out can be resuspended even with the internal bypass. The University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center, which was established in two thousand and four, has monitored these practices, and their most recent annual report from two thousand and twelve shows that in an online configuration, they're only capable of removing between twenty-six to twenty-nine percent of total suspended solids when in the online configuration. As the Connecticut D E P has a goal of eighty percent T S S removal, that falls woefully short of that particular standard. You cannot link a bunch of secondary practices together as being proposed here and expect to get water quality treatment out of a primary practice, most of which are different types of stormwater basins, as far as that goes. A deep-sump catch basin might remove nine percent of total suspended solids, assuming you clean them out annually like you're supposed to. A separator, again, is less than thirty percent T S S removal. It does nothing for nutrients because they tend to be in solution. Metals can also be only reduced less than thirty percent within the separator. And this is a large concern because you have a large paved parking lot here, and all of the water is being conveyed via a structural drainage system to the two particular basins on the site. The applicant does show by calculation that the bottom of the outlets from their two basins are elevated above the bottom of the basin, so the water quality volume will be held there, and that, that is a plus. However, it has not been demonstrated that simply holding the water quality volume is going to improve the water quality of the runoff. There is a, an approach called a pollutant loading analysis that can be done using the Schuler's equation, who was with the Center for Watershed Protection, that you can calculate the pollutant loads from a site under natural conditions and then developed conditions, and then determine what practices you're using and evaluate how much you're going to reduce the pollutant loads. That has not been done here. And based on the design of the two basins here, it will not occur sufficiently through the practices. In the applicant's case here, they have riprap berms, which are larger stone surrounding a core of a, believe, half-inch stone inside of it. Now, the basin itself is a level bottom. So the riprap berm is basically, think of it as a stone wall across the bottom of a level basin. The dirtiest water in a basin is what is on the surface. It is not the higher up in the water. So the half-inch stone, which is located inside the, the larger riprap, will be exposed to the dirtiest water and will easily clog with fine sediment. It doesn't take much to do that. Once that clogs, then the water's simply passing through the larger stone into the larger portion of the basin. For bays are defined by the Connecticut D E P manual as a depressional storage below the bottom of the basin, being four to six foot in depth, being a two-to-one or three-to-one length-to-width ratio, with the water coming in one end and the water going out the other end. The reason for this type of design is that you want the sediment to settle out over the length of the for bay, and the new water coming in, being a permanent pool, will not stir up the sediment that is at the bottom. Hence, that's why the for bay will trap sediments because it's kind of like a stilling basin. And the water at the top, when new water comes into it, is what is pushed into the second part of the practice. As proposed, these quote-unquote for bays by the applicant will not trap any kind of sediment at all. Another standard within the two thousand and four D E P manual, and it is a guidance document, is called groundwater recharge volume. This is a volume that you calculate based on your soil types. And if you have multiple soil types, then you have to break down your site to calculate then you have to break down your site to calculate the different soil classes of A, B, C, and D. And the idea of the groundwater recharge volume is to maintain the pre-development infiltration rates on the site that naturally occur. The only way to do that in the bottom of these basins is infiltrate water. That is not going to occur. So we're not maintaining natural hydrologic infiltration rates on this particular site. The other aspect of this site that's problematic is there is no reduction in runoff volume. You have a very large extent of impervious cover. You have the building roof. You have multiple sidewalks. You have a very large parking area and driveway. You have the exterior garages. And for a two-year rainfall event, you're going to increase the runoff volume by 3/4, 0.7 acre feet, which is roughly 30,700 cubic feet of runoff. Without playing a numbers game, each cubic foot is seven and a half gallons. So it's easy to do the math. You're talking over 200,000 gallons for a two-year rainfall event, which is slightly over three inches of rain based on the NOAA data from Cornell. So you're going to have a significant increase in runoff volume. The other problem is, is this is all directly connected impervious cover. So when it rains, the runoff enters this drainage system, quickly reaches these basins, and also is quickly discharged from these basins. So the downstream-receiving wetland areas are going to see the increased volumes very, very quickly. There is ample literature going back to the late 90s, early 2000s of the adverse impacts of increased runoff volumes on the natural system. A project I worked on back in the mid-1985 in the town of Reading where I grew up, Reading had adopted a peak-rate attenuation for 50-year storms. And this project actually was the first one with ever detention basins in Reading. Well, because it was designed for the large storm, all, every storm under a 50-year storm, which is pretty much all of them that we get annually, went in and right out of these basins. And what has resulted in the 35 years since those were built is, is deep eroded channels occurred at the outlets of every one of these basins, resulting in downstream sedimentation of wetlands and watercourses. The eroded material was carried down and deposited within the wetland systems. So runoff volume is a serious concern. There's a stone trench in the bottom of each of these basins that you can see here. There is no pipe in this. There is no explanation as to what it is for. And I have no idea what the purpose of it was. The applicant did do some soil testing in the basins. Basin number 210, which I'm not sure which one that is, the upper one or the lower one. Uh, the bottom is at 368. And, but the test holes show ledge between 366 and 371. So the bottom of this basin is going to be sitting partially in bedrock. The 2004 manual requires a vertical separation between the bottom of the basin to ledge. And that has not been provided. If you are in ledge, what you have to do is line the bottom of the basin with a 30-mil impermeable liner to prevent water within the basin from infiltrating into the bedrock, where it can carry pollutants down. In basin 220, there's only perhaps a foot to two feet of separation between the bottom of the basin and ledge rock based upon the test pits done. Additionally, the 2004 manual has a lot of different basin types. We have constructed wetlands. You have wet extended detention basins. You have dry basins. These are more or less a dry basin configuration. Dry basins are not known for doing much for water quality. Within each of the different types of practices, there are certain components that must be provided within the design to address water quality. That includes a forbay. If you were doing a constructed wetland basin, there's a certain percentage of high marsh. There's a certain percentage of low marsh. And those are water which is six to 18 inches in depth. You might have a micro pool, which is a pool six to eight foot deep. But what you want to do is have long flow paths through these systems so that the water, the water from impervious areas has a lot of contact time with vegetation and soil where natural processes can reduce the pollutant loads going forward. There's a provision in the, on sheet UT of the plan set, which you don't need to go to, that it'll, the sediment will be removed when it's 15 inches deep. Well, this riprap berm is going to let sediment pass right through it. So you're never going to wind up with 15 inches of sediment there. But also, a question is, how do you remove sediment from riprap? Basically, you can't unless you take the riprap apart and you vacuum it with some type of vacuum truck. It is extremely labor-intensive. There was a study years ago that was presented at one of the LID conferences by North Carolina State, where they went in to clean out a sediment for bay that was entirely riprap. And besides pumping it down, they basically had to hand-remove all the rock, a little area at a time, vacuum up the accumulated sediment, and put the rock back. It took over a week to clean one for bay that was riprap. So it's not easy to remove dirt. It also talks that they're going to potentially use front-end loaders, backhoes, or vacuum trucks. Well, with a steep slope of the basin coming into the basin, how do you get a backhoe or loader down into it? Also, if you're digging it out, if you have a vegetated bottom, you're going to obviously disturb the vegetation. But now you're going to be putting stormwater back into it. It is extremely difficult, if not impossible, to get vegetation to grow when it's getting flooded going forward. On the landscape plan, it calls out a New England wetland plant mix to be used. It's called the New England Conservation Restoration Mix. The website specifically calls out it's not appropriate for detention basins, or the mix is particularly appropriate, excuse me, for detention basins to do not, do not hold standing water. Well, this basin will have a permanent pool in the bottom as the outlet structures are elevated above the bottom of the basin. The water, based on the plan, will be a foot deep. So these plants will not grow in that area. They can tolerate infrequent inundation, but not constant flooding. If you have a permanent pool, that very much meets the definition of permanent flooding. Another issue is that basin 220 is going to be used as a temporary sediment basin. There's no provisions on the plan for how you're going to reconvert that sediment basin, which is designed to trap all the fine sediment during the construction process, to a permanent basin and then turn stormwater onto it. And many other projects that I have seen that has proposed the same approach, that the basins are supposed to be vegetated, the vegetation does not become established because as soon as you remove the sediment, you're discharging stormwater. And the plants never got an opportunity to be established within them. The construction narrative for this project is lacking, especially due to the amount of, you know, rock cut, movement of rock that you're doing. They're cutting on the, I guess would be the northwestern side of the site and then filling on the southeastern side of the site. The plan must be more, much more robust. It does not come close to meeting the requirements of the Connecticut 2002 Stormwater Guidelines, as far as that goes. There's a question I have. If you're blasting, particularly on the upper side of the site with parking, you can get cracks in the rock. And it may exist, or you may create some with the blasting. You know, groundwater can come bleeding out of that if it's under the pavement. That, you can saturate the base, the gravel base, under the pavement. And as we can see along any of our highways, you know, once you start getting water under the pavement, freeze-thaw cycles can pretty much rip the pavement apart. You know, you can also see along many of the cuts on 84, you know, during the wintertime, the glaciers that come out of the rock. And that's simply seepage. It's not a lot of flow, but it's constant out of the rock cuts. You know, the bottom line is the basins, as proposed, do not adequately address water quality or runoff volume. And these two things combined will cause adverse environmental impacts to the downgrading discharge points. One last comment is, the applicant showed a vehicle turning movement plan for the emergency fire vehicle from the portion of Quarry Road coming into the site and going around the building. But Quarry Road improvements coming in off Farmington Avenue, there's two effectively 90-degree turns there. It has not been demonstrated that the fire truck can safely make those turns in its own lane, as that would be a public road at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trinkas. Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Zaitujins' verified petition to intervene is of course predicated on the allegations that there's a reasonable likelihood of unreasonable pollution to natural resources within your jurisdiction as a result of the proposed activity. And we rely on and associate ourselves with the testimony and the writings of Dr. Michael Clemens. His letter to the commission is dated January 17, 2021. He testified before the commission on January 25. And unfortunately, he had to chair his own planning commission meeting this evening and is not here, but will be available at the next meeting, perhaps, should the commission wish to hear more from him. But in his testimony and in his letter, he discussed the ecological connections present on the site and the critical elements of the siting of the development that sever the wildlife corridor that plays such an important part in the habitat and biota and fauna on the site. He described the wetland-dependent amphibians and the ribbon snake. And there have been box turtles. And this wildlife corridor is very important. And habitat fragmentation is an unreasonable impact that is associated with this proposed development. So he also expressed concern about further degradation to the two vernal pools. And all has more specifically set forth in his letter and in his testimony, and indeed, in the petition to intervene. And those are the bases on which we come before the commission, seeking to establish that there is a reasonable likelihood of unreasonable pollution. And yet, more reasons for the commission, who is the steward over the town of Farmington's acknowledgement and, and concern and, and care of its natural resources to reject this application. And with that, Madam Chair, if there are any questions for Mr. Trinkas, we'll be happy to hear them.
Thank you. We would go to the commissioners. Should they have any questions on the intervenor's presentation? Start with Patrick. You see, we're...
Patrick, do you have any questions regarding the intervenor presentation?
Let's move on to Mike. Do you have any, Mike?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Matt?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
And Eve?
I'm here, sorry. I guess just a question about procedures. Everything we just heard is also being presented to inland wetland, right, commission?
Uh, yeah, so, yes and no. The wetlands have had their own hearings. And both Dr. Fitchman with Attorney Ainsworth and Mr. Mrs. Zaitujin with Attorney Shansky filed intervenor petitions with the Wetland Commission. And those, that proceeding has closed. And the commission is deliberating at this particular point.
May I say a few things to that question, please?
Sure.
Thank you. This is Attorney Marjorie Shansky. The jurisdiction of this body is actually somewhat broader than the Inland Wetlands Agency, which is looking at regulated activity and specific wetland impacts. You are imbued with the authority over the Plan of Conservation and Development, which in the 2018 updated publication waxes poetic about the wildlife conservation study that Farmington had engaged in with your Farmington River Associated Towns. And a lot of that information was captured in Dr. Clemens' letter to you, the commission, dated January 16, 2021. So, yes, the information that was relevant to the Inland Wetlands Commission was brought to the Inland Wetlands Commission. But there is more and broader information that has been brought to you because that is the nature of your jurisdiction emanating from the Plan of Conservation and Development and the standards in your own regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, thank you, Shannon. The, uh, one thing that, and I don't, you know, we've had a lot of, obviously, meetings. We have tons of documentation that was shared with us. Our website has been up to date, so thank you. Of course, you know, having a full-time job and doing other things, it's, you know, setting up the time to review it has been difficult. There's the one picture in the presentation that I feel like maybe I missed. It's the photo that the neighbor would be seeing. How accurate? I think it's the 42 Pratt Lang Pond View.
Yeah, 42, yes.
So I know there was additional information about, like, the grading. But is this pretty accurate?
That is what we understand. It was prepared by Genesis Studios from the applicant's materials and the town GIS. And Engineer Steve Trinkas reviewed it. And, no, he reviewed it and found that it was a realistic representation of what the Zaitujins will see from their property. And he identifies the contours that make that the case.
Okay. It surprised me. And of course, I like seeing things, right? Not just reading. And we get the elevations and the maps and everything. But, um, okay, it just, thank you for clarifying that. I have no other questions.
Marcy?
I have no questions. Thank you.
John?
I have no questions. I would just say that I take away from this that there's going to be considerable environmental injury done to these properties if this would go forward.
Your position?
Keith, do you have a question or a comment?
None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see Patrick's back.
I'm sorry?
Patrick.
Is he back?
I don't know.
Oh, yes, I am. Yeah. Yeah, no, my mouse was disconnected. Yeah, I have no questions. I tried to answer that a couple of times. But I don't know why, my miss, my mouse was disconnected. I don't know if that makes a difference. But anyways, no, no questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. We now, on the agenda, have public comments on the intervenor's petition. Are there any people who have called in that would like to make comments on the intervenor petition? Do you have any?
Nothing yet.
Anyone wishing to ask any questions regarding the information just shared for the Zaitujin intervenor petition? Please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. And you can address the commission with any additional questions you have.
Nothing there's?
No, I'm saying none. No, I'm saying none at this point. So... All right. So, do I have Attorney Hollister on the line?
Still here.
Okay. So our next step would be, so there's a, I'm wondering if at this particular point in time, if we would suggest pausing and continuing to the April meeting. And so we're at the point of cross-examine. I've got about 100 pages of written comment, public comment. Like I said, I think I'll keep that till the front end of the next meeting.
Ms. Rutherford, I would like to ask...
Ms. Rutherford, I would like to ask two questions, because it involves the picture that's on the screen.
Certainly.
Attorney Shansky, may I ask a question directly to your client, Douglas Zetugian?
What's the question?
Well, the question is, why is so much of the Zetugian property shown on this screen cleared, completely of vegetation? And the second question is, if those buildings were not photoshopped in there, what would the view be?
You may have to ask that question at the next meeting. I'm not sure my clients are here anymore.
No, it's, I looked on the, I looked on the participant list. They were...
I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry. There you are.
No problem. What would be there would be trees, in terms of the view?
All the way to the horizon? You wouldn't see any medical buildings?
No, you could barely see them. You can see some light. You can certainly see the light traffic, without a doubt. You can see some lights through there from all the clearing that was done on the other side of Route 4.
Okay.
And that alone, with the clearing that, well, we can continue this. With the clearing that was done from all those medical buildings, we not only have lights coming through there, but we also have huge changes, as many people have said, in terms of the noise. So I can't imagine being in a situation where we'd have a building like this right in our backyard with not only lights, but noise as well.
Okay. Ma'am, the other, thank you. The other question was, why is so much of your yard cleared?
Because we, if you look, if you look on any of the maps, you can see we have a huge amount of cleared area.
Yeah. Why did you clear it?
We bought the house that way.
Okay. Why did you not replant it?
Why, I don't understand the relevance of the question.
Well, you're saying, see, the building is...
That's the way we bought the house, and that's the way we left it. The kids are in the backyards. They play down in that area. I'm not sure what the relevance of that is.
Okay. Well, ma'am, it's, I have the right to ask you some questions. You've made a presentation. I represent the applicant, so...
And I understand that, but I don't, I don't understand the relevance. That's the way we bought the house. The area was cleared down there. Our children play down there. And I, we've never replanted down there, so I'm not quite sure what you're getting at. If you could just tell me specifically what it is you're getting at, I'll be happy to answer it.
Okay. All I'm trying to establish now is, you bought the property with that amount of clearing. You didn't do any more clearing yourself? Is that?
No. That's the amount of clearing that was done down there. We kept back the brush from that area, yes.
Okay. And if you're concerned about your view, light intrusion, why did you not replant any of that cleared area?
Well, it hasn't been, has been a couple, a couple of years that the, all that medical equip, all that medical build, all those medical buildings went up.
It's been a couple of years, yes. So why did you...
It's just been a couple of years, because we haven't. But this is right in, right in our backyard. My point being that the medical buildings are on the other side of Route 4, the opposite side of the road. And I can see them, and you can ask other people on Pradling Pond Road, and they will verify that as well. The lights come through the trees. The noise level from the highway has certainly increased. And you're trying to put this building, which does not belong here, in our backyard. All the wildlife will be destroyed, will be run out of this area.
All right. Ma'am, let me, let me, let me finish with this question. Do you know when your, your, your back part of your property was cleared? What year? By whom?
Oh, I don't know what year was cleared.
All right. Thank you. I, I don't need to anymore, ask any more questions. Thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Further, Madam Chair and Ms. Rutherford, right now.
You have nothing further? Okay.
Thank you.
Attorney, Attorney Shansky, do you have anything further for this evening?
No, thank you. Not this eve, oops, wait, nope, wait.
No, we can hear you. You're good.
Thank you. Sorry. Yes, not, nothing for this evening. Thank you.
All right. And Attorney Ainsworth, anything further for this evening?
I don't believe so. No. Thank you.
Okay. And given the hour, I'm going to suggest that we continue all three items to April 12th is our next meeting date.
With the two intervenors' petitions and the app...
And the application. We need a motion to continue the intervenor petitions, and then a motion to continue the application.
Commissioners, we need a motion and a second, please.
So two motions, Shannon?
Yes, please. Two separate.
See how bad it...
The intervenor petitions can be done together as one motion, and then the application as a second motion, please.
Okay. This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to continue the intervenor applications from, hold on, from both Richard Fitchman and Douglas and Kimberly Zaitunjin to the next meeting, which is April 12th.
Yes. Thank you.
Need a second, please?
Matt Pogson here, and I second that.
All right. Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
We are voting on continuing the two, this motion is on continuing the two intervenor status applications.
Yes.
Okay. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. We need a second motion to continue the formal application of 402 Farmington Avenue LLC to April 12th.
It's, Inez St. James, I make the motion to continue the application from 402 Farmington Avenue LLC for change of zone from BR and RAD to special innovation zone and site plan approval until April 12th.
You have a second, please?
Matt Pogson, I have a second.
There's a motion and a second. Does everyone understand what you're voting on? This is for the principal application.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
The Commission, the Commission is going to move on to the Planner's Report, please.
Good evening, everyone. There are two things on the agenda for the Planner's Report, but I will give you a heads up that we have two additional items on the Planner's Report. There'll be four items discussed, hopefully not in too much length given the hour. So 155 Brickyard Road was brought up as a previous point of conversation within the Commission regarding the sign inquiry on the truck. And we have received comment from the town attorney that I circulated to the Commission, so I wanted to bring that up and make sure that you guys saw his notes regarding this truck. He states that the vehicle at issue is, currently appears to be used on a regular basis, and the regulations do not contain sufficient standards for their enforcement. And so it is likely not an enforceable action to have the truck removed at a specific location. Do we have any questions regarding the town attorney's letters that I have circulated?
So, this is Matt Pogson. I'm obviously the one who brought this up, and I know we're all tired, so I'll try to make it brief. I read the letter. I read through what he said. I find it a bit disconcerting due to the fact that we've used this exact regulation in the past to enforce this exact same situation, and it was acceptable at that time. A recent, a recent event on another Commission has caused a lot of legal things to come up. And an interesting fact that I actually had not known from any, at any point until recently when that came up, is that the lawyers, the town attorney's view, and what they come down with as their final answer is technically by the town charter's rule, the law, which is an interesting thing that I really didn't quite understand. And I'm a little concerned about this being the ruling of this situation. And the reason isn't because of the specific instance. It's because of what this could lead to and where it will lead to. We currently regulate signs, the size of signs, what they look like to some degree, and we have very specific standards to make sure that our town remains, well, keeps its character. And if we allow one of these ox trucks at every business, which quite honestly, I don't see why that wouldn't be allowed, it's obviously a bit of an exaggeration, but if you were to take one of these ox trucks and pick any business that you regularly go to and park it out in front, it will, well, it can start to build. If you go down Farmington Avenue right now, what's the cleaner's, Edrick, Edricks, I believe, is the cleaner's name? They're parking their vehicles along the road now, and there's a few other instances of it. But regardless, I'm very concerned about what this could lead to if it is not enforceable. So going back to the thought, and definitely not tonight, but going back to the thought of discussing this, to say, is it something that we want to pursue? It may be a good idea just to see what the town attorney would say is the proper legal reading or the terminology that would be required in order for this to be an enforceable, like, an enforceable rule, ordinance. Now, granted, again, it may go back. I know Inez had said that she didn't see too many issues with it during the last meeting, so maybe, you know, maybe it's something that nobody wants to enforce anymore, and it's just not going to be something we even deal with. But it concerns me, and I do not, again, want to get into this tonight, but I also didn't want to just breeze over it and not say something. So we can talk about it another time. Doesn't have to happen now, but I feel like we should continue the conversation at a later time.
All right. I hear you, Matt, and we can continue this conversation at a later date.
Yeah.
And we keep it in the Planner's Reports for future conversations.
Yeah, it's probably a fair request, too, for us to follow up with Attorney D. Crescendo to see if we can come at it from the other direction, as you're suggesting. If what, if how it's worded is not enforceable, is there a way to craft something that would be enforceable? And perhaps it's something to do with delivery vehicles not to be stored, you know, just as we regulate where, you know, the garbage and dumpsters and things can be, and loading areas on a facility, can we regulate where the delivery vehicles are stored on the facility and tag it in with the, the parking portion of the regulations and not so much the signage? So, and perhaps...
Thank you.
Yeah. I agree with that. I think we should be, we should continue talking about this. And I, I'm sorry, I know this is going on record. I drive on that street many, many, many times a day. Like, I don't need to take pictures. That truck doesn't move. I'm sorry. But, yes, I know it's not 24 hours I drive on that road, but many. And I've never seen that truck move. And even in bad weather, it's, it, the sun melts the snow. That's my observation.
Matt, this is Barbara. As you well know, I was here, and we've talked about this, when we've had the same moving sign issue in the past. So I, I support your effort. I think it's the right effort, and I think as a Commission, we have an obligation as our businesses demand more signage, and we're trying to control signage. So I think it's a great idea to pursue it, Matt. Thank you. I want to move on to number two on the...
Yes, number two on the Planner's Report is regarding the update on the temporary certificates for outdoor dining. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic last spring, early summer, the town planning office helped execute temporary certificates for outdoor dining. And based on the current climate of COVID-19 and the governor lifting particular statutes and regulations, we wanted to ensure for businesses that there is some stability with these temporary certificates. And so it was our thought that we would extend these outdoor dining temporary certificates till the end of 2021, terminating on December 33rd, 2021. So all previously approved applications will not require, will not be required to submit a new application. All restaurants will continue to have to comply with SVHD regulations for outdoor dining. Their total capacity shall not exceed previously approved, and they shall all still require, any erection of tents will still require a tent permit. So we've drafted a letter that it is our intent, assuming if everyone is in agreement of this approach, to continue to extend outdoor dining options until the end of 2021.
Any Commissioner have an issue with that?
No. It makes sense. Thank you.
Not at all.
My only comment, this is Barbara, my only comment would be that it'd be tied to any regulation change made by the governor. So if we had a resurgence, and he put new regulations on, on outdoor dining or restaurant dining, because it keeps changing, and we don't know what's going to happen, but I think we should keep that in mind, that it would be contingent upon any new regulation put in place by the governor.
Sure. I can add a question.
Does anybody disagree with that? I mean, it just, to me, it's kind of common sense. We need to make sure we comply. Just don't give them cartilage, but they have to abide by the regulations, not do, do whatever they want to do. So...
That makes sense, Barbara. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's move on to number three, our Planner's Report.
I'll go through. We received a sign, excuse me, a fence registration form for 461 Cook Street. I will show you the lot location. It is a commercial property. So, they are requesting a fence continuation. They have a fence currently right here, and they want to gate off their parking area to, for safety of their trucks. Bruce and I went on a little site visit to check out the status of the property, and they currently have this white vinyl fence here. And their original request was to add a chain link fence to close off the property. We have been working with the property owners, and don't mind me guiding them, but it was agreed upon between the property owners and the neighboring, the neighbors, that extending the vinyl fence would be preferred. So the current plan is for the owner to extend the vinyl fence to the telephone pole here, and then close off the property with the remaining chain link fence. So it was the thought of the town staff to deal with this administratively, and I'm here to hear any concerns or questions about this.
The only question I have, looking at that map, is the building behind it, that building?
Yeah.
Do they lose access? How do they get to that building?
There's a gate. There'll be a gate right behind the first bill, uh, second building, right behind the second building, a gate right there. And then there'll be...
So the new, the new gate won't interfere with that back property? Is it not on the same property, or is it on a different property?
No, it's on the same property. What's gotten, what's happening is the vehicles were being broken into right, right where it says 461.
Yep.
So they want to move all their vehicles to the back, and, and they want to secure them with a, with chain link. There'll be gates at both sides so they can get into the, so each company will have a gate to get into the gaps.
All right. Okay. I just didn't want them to be isolated.
No, no, she don't want, she doesn't want to lose a...
The tar and feather. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Uh-uh.
Nope.
No problem.
We'll let staff handle that.
Yep. Perfect.
And let's move on to number four.
Yep. We got one more for you. So... Yep. We got one more for you. So, this is our friends for seven eighty-four Farmington Avenue. You'll recall, we chatted about this one, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before. This is the relocated building that Bob Weiner is doing. The building's currently here. They're pushing it back and turning it, rotating it ninety degrees. We got a permit in, and the building permit, to put HVAC ground-mounted units right here on the back face of the building. So, I had a few logistical questions for them, and they decided with the proximity to the property line, the snow plow and snow removal and the exit lane, et cetera, they're looking to put, there's mini splits, and I can, I've got some spec sheets for you to take a quick peek at, but they're going to put mini splits on the rear of the building, and understanding that there really is not a rear of this building, but on this north face of the building. And they are going to be located on this face. They're going to put one on either side of the window. It's a unit that will look like this one here in the lower corner. It'll be painted white to match the building. It'll be, and this, on this near side, about a foot and a half off, the elevation drops away. This one will be a little farther off the, the ground elevation. And there are wall-mounted brackets that they will use for this. And we will work with them on the screening, so it'll look like this. And I'm sure there's a great way to rot, ah, here we go, rotate. So, wall-mounted brackets, it's not, it's about thirteen inches in depth. So, I did share this with Tim Eagles. I did not share it with the entire commission, but I did share it with Tim, his chair, to get his thoughts. And he came back and said, of all the options, this is probably our best option. I, it doesn't make sense to have it on the drive-through side. Certainly, we don't want anything roof-mounted. We don't want it on the frontage road. So, this is, of all the locations, this is really the best location. And we will work with them with this landscaping that's here. There are some clearances, of course, just like there are for our HVAC units at our homes. But there's some views here, and there's some, I think there's the opportunity to put some fountain grasses here. So, it's probably for eight months of the year will be fairly well screened, potentially through the winter months, not as well screened, but there could be snow piles there, too. So, so again, unless there's any objection, this is, you know, this is what we've vetted to modify the design that came in for the building permit. If there's no objections, then we'll go ahead and sign off on this for the building permit with the HVAC units on the north side of the building as just shown on the elevation.
Commissioners, comments?
Sounds like a good solution. I like the grass idea, too.
This is Matt Pogson. My only comment is that there should be just a thumbs up button, so we can kind of just give you a quick thumbs up to let you know everything's good.
Oh, I got that.
Well, you know, if I did that, then you were all saying, well, you didn't even ask me. I have to ask you. I think it's a pretty creative solution.
Both.
That is, come on.
Can we have the button for the next meeting?
Yeah. I'll do, see what I can, see what we can do. All right. Got it. Duly noted. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Now, for the minutes of the March...
I'm ready with the motion. All right. Inez St. James, I make the motion to approve the minutes of March eighth, twenty twenty-one, town plan and zoning permission meeting.
This is Matt Pogson. I'm going to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. You are adjourned. Thank you all very much for good meeting.
Hallelujah.